Our regular agenda tonight, I want to recognize promotion that's been made recently. Mr. Sam Huddleston, sitting over here to Mrs. Jones is right, has been promoted to Assistant City Engineer, and with that promotion, he gets to sit up here with the Planning Commission now. So, Mr. Huddleston, you worked hard for that, and it's well deserving. Thank you, I know you do a great job.
Well, thank you, appreciate your confidence, and appreciate working with all the members of the Planning Commission staff.
Thank you for all you do, Sam. We have eight public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately .8 acres located along Reed Avenue to be rezoned from RD to RS4. Robert James and Betty French are the applicants. Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, and good evening members of the Planning Commission. Our first public hearing tonight is a rezoning request for property located along the north side of Reed Avenue in the block between Highland and University. Mr. Robert James and Ms. Betty French own the property, and they are the applicants for this rezoning. The property is roughly 13,000 square feet, but it is zoned RD, and in the RD zoning district residential duplex, there is a minimum of eight, if we could, we get the map on the screen, please? Thank you. It's the property colored in purple, currently zoned RD residential duplex. Previously, the property had a house and a mobile home on the property. The mobile home has been removed, and the house was destroyed by fires. The property is currently vacant. Mr. James and Ms. French would like to transfer the property to Habitat for Humanity, and Habitat for Humanity would like to divide the property into two separate lots of record so they can build two single-family residences on the property. Because the property is currently zoned RD, there is a minimum lot size for a single-family home of 8,000 square feet. Since the property is only 13,000 square feet in size, the property could not be subdivided, there's not enough lot area to subdivide it into two lots of record. So, Mr. James has requested rezoning of the property to RS4, Single Family Residential District with a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet. The property could be resubdivided into two lots of record, and even though it's 13,000 square feet, the maximum lot yield will be two lots of record because of the width of the lot will not accommodate three lots of record. So, he has made the request to RS4. Mr. James and Ms. French also own the property to the, to the east, which is vacant, and you see there in blue, there are three additional parcels that were advertised as additional study area, because the property itself is not contiguous with RS4 zoning. So, in order to connect it to RS4 zoning and make a more cohesive zoning district, we included the three parcels to the east, and as you can see, on the east side of South University Street, there is existing RS4 zoning. So, by rezoning the property that is colored blue, will connect the requested property with existing RS4 zoning. The properties that are colored in blue, as I mentioned, there's the vacant piece of property directly adjacent to the subject property owned by the applicants, they have no objection to the inclusion of their property in the rezoning request, and the two parcels along South University Street are developed with single-family residences right now, and are not big enough for duplexes. They do not meet the 8,000 square foot minimum lot size in the RD zone for a duplex. So, really, their utility is only as a single-family residence, so it appears that rezoning those properties from RD to RS4 will not have much impact on the existing single-family residences. So, it appears to be, appears to make sense to rezone all four of the parcels, or those three additional parcels, if you decide to rezone the, the purple parcel that was requested for rezoning to RS4. Worthy of note is the property is located within the study area of the Manny Avenue Comprehensive Plan in the Patterson Park Revitalization District, and the plan recommends that future redevelopment efforts in this area should focus on the provision of single-family owner-occupied housing as a catalyst for positive change in the neighborhood. In that regard, this rezoning request appears to be consistent with the plan. That block is all zoned RD, however, there are a number of single-family residences on the property, and there was a similar rezoning, if you can see, right here, there we go, that was rezoned from RD to RS4, just on the other side of the block, just last year. With that being said, the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter, after which it will need to formulate a recommendation to the City Council. Mr. James is in the audience, if you have any questions for him, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, do either of the applicants or their representative have a statement they'd like to make prior to the opening, opening of the public hearing?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing, excuse me, I'll briefly go through our rules that we conduct the public hearings by. Once I open the public hearing, you'll be free to come forward to the microphone, when you come forward to the microphone, either in opposition or in wanting to support the application, either way, come up, state your name clearly, if you would, and give your address for the record, and make your statements. We have, like I said, eight public hearings tonight, and a lot of people would like to speak, so we will be observing the three-minute time limit, so keep your comments to no more than three minutes, and those go by pretty fast. Make all your questions and comments directly to the Planning Commission and all the other members of the audience. If you do have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, and try to answer them at the conclusion of the public hearing, if at all possible. All that being said, I'll open this public hearing at this time, and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody on this proposal? Okay, that's the case, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions by members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Second public hearing is a zoning application for approximately one acre located along Bradaville Pike to be rezoned from Commercial Local, which is .42 acres, and RS10, which is .59 acres, to Commercial Fringe. Christine Carey is applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. This next public hearing is for you to consider rezoning two separate parcels which are owned by the same person, Ms. Christine Carey. She owns properties located along Bradaville Pike, as you can see on the illustration before you, these parcels are colored orange. They're located just east of the intersection of Minerva Drive with Bradaville, and, as I mentioned, consists of two parcels. The properties to the north are zoned RS10, but that's the location of a church, of the Olive Branch Missionary Church, and the property adjacent to this, to the east, is also zoned RS10, but is also the location of another church, which is a Methodist church. The properties to the south are CL, that's Local Commercial District, and that CL property is developed with commercial and multifamily uses. And then the PCD zoning on the corner of Minerva Drive and Bradaville Pike is for a motor vehicle sales. The properties before you are zoned CL, Commercial Local District, and it's vacant, and RS10, Single Family Residential District, and it's constructed with a single-family home. The applicant owns both parcels and wishes to redevelop them for a commercial use, although she does not have a specific development plan in mind. So, the request is to zone these to CF, which is a Commercial Fringe District. These properties are located sandwiched between commercial and institutional uses, and not adjacent to any single-family residential uses, and are a good candidate for redevelopment. On their own, they are probably too small to meet commercial development standards, but when combined, they're approximately an acre, and then they could be redeveloped for commercial purposes. Representatives of the applicant are here this evening, and will present information to you if you have any questions, but they don't have a formal presentation prepared. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions? You said they do not have a formal, okay, presentation. Okay, in that case, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments by members of the Planning Commission? If they are known, we're ready for a motion.
I'm going to motion we approve. Sub, any staff comments?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Next public hearing is a zoning application for approximately 10.3 acres located along North Thompson Lane in Wilkinson Pike to be rezoned from RS15 and Light Industrial to Commercial Medical and GDO2. High Point Limited LLC is applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is for you to consider rezoning approximately 10.3 acres located along the southern side of Wilkinson Pike. The property is identified in three shades of color on the map that you have before you. The orange is the area that's currently zoned for single-family purposes, in which they're requesting to be rezoned to Commercial Medical District, and to also be included in the Gateway Design Overlay District. The area that's shaded orange and also has the hatch pattern is currently in the Gateway Design Overlay District, so their, this request is, doesn't need to add it to the gateway, but it is to rezone that property from single-family residential to Commercial Medical District. And then the parcel that's shaded blue and also on the hatch is currently also located within the gateway, and it's zoned Light Industrial District, and they're requesting to zone it to Commercial Medical District as a matter of having a cohesive zoning for these properties. The proposed use would be permitted in the LI District, but they're proposing the CM just to make it consistent. And the request does consist of six parcels and a portion of a seventh parcel for an overall area which they hope to rezone to CM and allow a future development. It is located just south of the Stones River National Battlefield, and it's also located adjacent to, on the eastern side, so on the western side of this property, is a developed single-family subdivision, which is zoned Single Family Residential District. The property to the south is owned by Trustpoint, who is the applicant for this matter, and they have an existing facility to the south, and then just south of that are additional commercial uses. And of course, the hospital is located across Thompson Lane. The CM district they are requesting to be zoned allows institutional and very limited commercial uses. The purpose of the CM district is to provide a zoning category, zoning category, which is devoted primarily to health-related purposes. The district is designed to permit the development, expansion, and modernization of hospitals, clinics, medical laboratories, and medical offices, so it's a very restrictive commercial use that really only allows medical-type offices. A real estate office, for example, would not be permitted, but a medical office would. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting on this matter at the St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital on July 27th, which was well-attended. The, their representatives of the applicant here tonight who would like to give you a presentation, and we'll invite Mr. Brick Murfree to the lectern, and then he has additional members of the team which will go over the specific development plan.
Okay. Mr. Murfree, good evening.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission and staff. I'm Brick Murfree of the law firm of Murfree and Goodman, and I represent the applicant tonight. As Margaret Ann said, it's for an expansion of Trustpoint Hospital, which is currently on Thompson Lane. I'm going to flip through these real quick, if I can. There we go. Trustpoint opened its doors in 2012, and it's on Thompson Lane, it's located at 1009 North Thompson Lane. Its focus is on behavioral health care and mental health care, and its services include inpatient physical rehabilitation, so that would be things like rehab for broken hips and things like that, inpatient behavioral health treatment for adults and seniors, and intensive outpatient behavioral health for adults as well. Trustpoint was built to serve Rutherford County and Bedford Counties, Bedford County. Certificate of Need states that, and that's what it does, it serves our community and Bedford County. Before its construction, families from Rutherford County would have to go to Nashville or out of state for mental health care services, because they just weren't available here in Rutherford County. Currently, the facility has 101 beds for inpatient treatment, that's both for physical rehabilitation as for acute mental health. Trustpoint was recently acquired by Arcadia, which is a, a large health care company headquartered out of Franklin. Arcadia operates 587 hospitals that focus on behavioral health care in 39 states, the UK, and Puerto Rico, so it's a large company, but it's headquartered just down the street in Franklin. It was founded and is run by an MPSU graduate, is very active in our community, and was happy to acquire a site close to their headquarters, since their closest site is in Memphis. So, this is kind of the, their, their home site, so to speak. The application before you tonight is to rezone approximately 10.3 or 10.26 acres from Light Industrial and RS15 to Commercial Medical, which as Ms. Green mentioned, is a restrictive commercial zone that restricts uses to medical uses. The tracts are adjoining the existing Trustpoint campus, and they front on Thompson Lane, Wilkinson Pike, and Van Cleve. The proposal is to add a addition to the existing facility, as well as another two-story medical facility, a two-story hospital, as well as a two-story medical office building for some outpatient treatment, medical offices for physicians. Trustpoint is currently undersized for our rapidly growing community. Trustpoint has 100% occupancy nearly all the time, as soon as someone is out and, and is able to be discharged, the bed fills up immediately. Trustpoint must expand to meet the future needs of our community. The plans which are before you tonight, and their plans are forward-thinking, and will allow the facility to grow as our community does, and would allow a maximum of 249 beds, which is the Certificate of Need application that's been made with the state, but they'll put beds online as, as, as they can. Dr. Jeffrey Woods, who's the CEO of Trustpoint, has done a lot of community outreach. In the early planning stages of this project, he went and knocked on all the neighbors' doors he could, and sat down with neighbors to discuss their proposed expansion. He wanted to open a frank and open dialogue with him personally as the CEO, and, and we've had a lot of community involvement in the discussions of the plans for you tonight. The property, as was mentioned, is just across the street from Wilkinson Pike, from Stones River National Battlefield. We're very sensitive to that interface, and on July 15th, Jeffrey and I met with Brenda Waters, the superintendent, and several other representatives of the battlefield. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss ways to work together, it's Trustpoint's goal to build its hospital in a way that's sensitive to its location next to such a historic and important site, and we thought we are working on ongoing plans to work together to integrate the expansion of the two sites, to have landscaping and things that, that are complementary rather than conflict with the battlefield. On July 27th, we conducted a neighborhood meeting at St. Thomas Rutherford. I sent out 32 letters to neighboring property owners, made a number of phone calls, it was very well-attended, probably one of those productive neighborhood meetings frankly I've had in a long time, and there was a lot of good frank discussion about Trustpoint, their operations, their service in providing health care needs to the community, and ways that we could soften the impact of the potential expansion on the neighbors. Few of the things that we're committed to are, there will be no construction traffic or ingress and egress from Van Cleve, that's the neighboring single-family subdivision. Very early on, we identified that as just something that wasn't appropriate, it's a residential street currently, and it's just not suitable for either construction traffic or for traffic coming and going from the proposed expansion. The hospital staff has also agreed to work with city staff on the expansion of Wilkinson, Wilkinson, which is coming up in the future. The goal there is to have, to not get ahead or behind the city, and to integrate the two projects together, as we will be responsible for some improvements, obviously, and also to look towards pedestrian-friendly and safe access across various streets and to and from various places, including Battlefield. We've also committed to enhance setbacks along Van Cleve. Matt Taylor with SEC, who's the engineer for this project, is going to walk you through some site-specific things, including those setbacks. We've committed to enhance buffering and setbacks along Van Cleve, as, as an effort to try to be sensitive to the neighbors. He can give you the specifics here in a moment. Dr. Jeffrey Woods, CEO of Trustpoint, is going to talk a little bit more about their vision for the campus, their operations, and their services to the community. So, I'll yield the podium to Dr. Woods, and we'll be here to answer any questions you may have at the end.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Dr. Jeffrey Woods, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Trustpoint Hospital. I joined the hospital a little over three years ago on its first anniversary. At that time, we were a 66-bed hospital, serving, as Brick Murfree had mentioned, the rehabilitation patients with strokes and brain injuries and those types of things, and the psychiatric population. Since that time, we've expanded the hospital on three different occasions, and we are now at 101 beds with an additional 28 beds that have been approved under a prior certificate of need. The demand for the services that we provide have been far, far outpaced our ability to serve the patients in our community. In fact, we are turning away an average of 200 patients a month, simply because we do not have enough beds to take care of them. There are another 300 patients a month on average that we are turning away because we do not have the right service line to take care of their needs within our own community. And patients are having to travel as far as Memphis, Atlanta, to Missouri, as far away as Oregon, many out-of-state placements to try to meet the needs of our, of our community. So, we're committed to this project, and I've had, as Brick had mentioned, a number of meetings with the residents in the neighborhood behind the property, as well as some of the business owners in the community, to talk about what their concerns and interests and issues are, and we've made a number of commitments to them with respect to how we will conduct ourselves in this project and going forward. I'll yield now to Matt, who can come up and talk about the engineering. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lamb, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, Matt Taylor of SEC. Do have a few more slides to go through, and we'll be brief. As Brick mentioned earlier, we have planned for three total access points for the project as a whole. One of those is an existing access point off of Thompson, which will remain, and we'll merely grow our parking lot, connect into what's already there. And then we have two more access points planned on Wilkinson Pike, one of those, or you can see both in red there, the key point being here that we do not plan any access points off of Van Cleve Lane, and have committed to the neighbors of that, and, as well as staff. All of our buildings will be one and two stories in nature, the existing hospital has, is a mixture of one and two. The new, new hospital will be two stories on the northern part, and then one story on each of the little pods to the south, and then the medical office building at the corner, at the intersection of Wilkinson and Thompson, will be a two-story medical office building as well. We have identified the drainage sensitivity, we identified that with the first phase of the hospital, and during our neighborhood meeting, we assured the neighbors we would take a very similar approach that we did with Phase 1. We even heard some neighbors say that the first project improved the drainage in the area, and we intend to continue improving that and coordinate that drainage improvement with the Wilkinson Pike improvements that the city is planning. We have planned for landscape buffers along our western and southern boundaries, where we abut Van Cleve, as well as some remaining residential land along Van Cleve to the south, where it joins the detention pond. Along Van Cleve, our parking is approximately 50 to 70 feet off of the existing right-of-way there, and we plan to leave that, try to leave any of the mature trees that fall inside of that in the future that we're able to after our grading and site activities. We're planning a detention pond in this southwestern corner that will then be routed back to Wilkinson Pike and discharged like it does today, except into an enhanced system built with the Wilkinson Pike roadway. And then during our neighborhood meeting, there were several residents that expressed some concern and a desire to have a physical barrier between our property and Van Cleve, so we've agreed to a fencing along Van Cleve and the southern portion of our property until it abuts the Roscoe Brown property. That fencing will meet all the GDO standards, as Ms. Green said earlier, we have requested the new properties to be, come into the GDO to have the same review status as the existing hospital and the remainder property. Our site will, as I mentioned, have landscape buffers, it will also meet the GDO standards for all the landscaping around the base of the building, around the right-of-ways, and to screen those parking lots from the adjoining roadways. Rely heavily on some evergreen materials for those buffers. And the building design itself will be of both buildings, the medical office building as well as the new hospital, will be consistent with the existing facility, have good quality of materials, and be, of course, subject to the GDO review on that. Again, Matt Taylor, myself, or either the, any of the other design team members will be happy to answer questions now or after the public hearing.
Matt, what's your plan for fencing, particularly along Van Cleve and Wilkinson Pike?
Along Wilkinson Pike, I think that we want to marry up with what the battlefield has, which is some of the split rail fencing, it's more of an ornamental aesthetic feel, so that you get that same feel on both sides of the roadway. We've also discussed the possibility of doing multi-purpose trail along Wilkinson Pike that would act as a, a better access point to the battlefield. And then along Van Cleve, we, we would like, what we've discussed internally, is more of a wrought iron look, it won't be the iron itself, it'll probably be a powder-coated aluminum, but something like that, so it's not necessarily a stark PVC or wood fence, but it would provide a physical barrier to prevent people going back and forth and abusing that point, point of access.
Okay.
Matt, what, what height do you plan?
The new, the new medical office building at the intersection will be two stories, so I'd say you're about, are you talking about the fence height?
The height of the fence.
I would think about six feet, that's usually a deterrent, so about six feet tall.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against this proposal. You don't have to raise your hand, just, just come on up.
My name is Mary Martin, I live in the community adjacent to the zoning changes.
Okay, would you give your address, please, ma'am?
2123 Harding Place.
Thank you very much.
Yes. The Wilkinson Pike neighborhood is an attractive and historically safe neighborhood. The Wilkinson Pike neighborhood is an attractive and historically safe neighborhood. Members of this neighborhood have been good contributing citizens to the greater community for greater than 50 years. I personally moved into that neighborhood as a child in 1968 and have grown up there and returned to it frequently. I completed my graduate education and returned to Murfreesboro 18 years ago to take care of my ill mother who lived in that neighborhood. I have roots in a calm, pretty residential neighborhood that should allow to continue to be a neighborhood. Removing four of the 24 houses so far, which is equivalent to 17% of the neighborhood, is not harmless to a community. It has existed for over half a century in a very calm and peaceful and characteristic way with contributing members and would like, the members of the neighborhood would like to continue with that same atmosphere. Damaging the neighborhood would be inappropriate. It's been there for a long time and it's, the neighborhood, the members of the neighborhood would like to continue with its current character, its current safety, the current quietness. Thank you for letting me say this and thank you for your consideration of my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Anybody else?
I'm Jonathan Graff and I'm on 1605 Van Cleve Lane. I live on the corner, I don't have the map up here, the corner of Harding Place and Van Cleve. And I do not want this facility built in my front yard because they've given y'all different numbers tonight than they gave us at our neighborhood meeting with them. I've already heard that from Dr. Woods himself just a moment ago. I will be one of the three families in this crowd that will be affected by this hospital. When I go to bed, when I wake up, it will be in my front yard. I didn't move there two years ago for this hospital to be built in my neighborhood and now it's in my front yard. And until they can resolve any issues that we have in our neighborhood, I'm strongly against them being approved for this zoning, for this building because they're giving y'all different numbers than we got. And until it's resolved, I'm not happy with them being in my front yard.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Barbara Frye. I live at 2107 Wilkinson Pike. My main concern is the drainage. We already have an issue with water there. If a building is put at the end of the street, it's going to push it on us. I measured from the top of the street to my yard is a foot and a half difference. Where's that water going to go? If there's a retention pond and he said, if I understood what he said correctly, it was going to come onto the drainage on Wilkinson Pike, we have no drainage. We have no sewer or anything. So I don't understand where that water's going to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Frank Caperton. I live at 1411 Van Cleve Lane, almost at the end of Van Cleve. But I'm also on the board of the Friends of the Stone River National Battlefield, so I'm asking questions on behalf of both the resident and a lover of our local history. You know, we've talked about a 50-foot buffer on Wilkinson, but is that 50 feet from today's center line or would that be a 50-foot buffer once Wilkinson is improved? That's my first concern. Would also, underground utilities would be nice on the Wilkinson side of the property. And of course, we want to, we'd like these assurances that will be no ingress or egress on Van Cleve. We have the best neighborhood in Rutherford County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caperton.
Thank you, Planning Commission. I'm Dr. Mark Friedman. I live at 1509 Van Cleve Lane. I've lived there for 12 years. My wife has lived there for 32 years. I'm a professional in disability services. I'm familiar with Trust Point and I've worked in facilities like that and operated them. I object to the expansion of the Trust Point on foregrounds. One is simply the size, that it's going to be two and a half times what it currently is. So the issue of size and the overwhelming of the community on Harding and Van Cleve and the expansion and simply the size, the development and the overwhelming the residential and, as you said, historical. Secondly, I also serve on the, as Board of Directors on the Friends of Stone River National Battlefield and I'm concerned about the sightlines. I'm concerned about the historical impact. The Slaughterfield is a major piece of the Battlefield that sits directly to the west of the Trust Point property and the sightlines will be directly affected by the Trust Point building. In addition, the trees that are buffering it again, if they were pushed back by the expansion of Wilkinson would be significant. So there's a large number of people at the Slaughterfield with cannons, that that's a site that's on the road and also a site to visitors attend and would be impacted by a change of seeing the building rather than what currently exists with the tree line. Thirdly is simply the size. Again, Trust Point's building is two and a half times the size that's currently, and the concern that simply the bigger the programs get, two and a half times, the more problems that are encountered. And then my final worry is on Wilkinson Pike itself, that Trust Point, as you saw on one of the, one of the maps, will have three entrances. The major entrance to the new building will be parallel to the walkway that goes on to the Stone River National Battlefield, which is actually Van Cleve Lane. There are a number of visitors who come there. There's the high school teams that bring vans and MTSU that bring vans and park in a very small spot there. It's inevitable that they would park in Trust Point's parking lot. More visitors would come, which is a good thing to the Stone River Battlefield, but people would be crossing Wilkinson Pike and that would be a safety concern, particularly as it's widened to three lanes. Those are the issues. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Friedman.
My name is Misty Wumble and I live at 2122 Harding Place, which is the cul-de-sac to the right once you turn on Van Cleve Lane. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband Jay, who's here with me tonight. We purchased our home on Harding Place in April of 2015 with the intention of raising our four children and making this our forever home. We searched Murfreesboro specifically far and wide for a one-level home specifically to meet the needs of our youngest son, who has special needs related to mobility. We have been welcomed with open arms by gracious neighbors, many of whom have lived here for decades and grown to love our safe, quiet, conveniently located place to call home. As a registered nurse by degree and an adoption caseworker by profession, I understand full well the need that the services that Trust Point Hospital expansion can provide to our community, specifically the pediatric population. However, neither of those titles will ever compare to my primary and most coveted title and responsibility of being a mom. I realize this meeting is strictly business to all of you on this board, but tonight I'm asking you to take off your business hats and think of this situation as a mother or a father or a grandfather or maybe everyone's favorite uncle and see and consider the proposed expansion from our side of the fence. According to Trust Point's website, they care for patients with many diagnoses. However, the one that concerns me most as a mother of four children include suicidal thoughts, destructive anger, psychosis, and behaviors posing a potential danger to yourself or others. And when it says others, as a mother, those others mean the people who I love the most that live within my home. So while we as a neighborhood have been assured by Dr. Woods that elopements are very rare and have never happened on his watch, we all know that it only takes one tragic instance for that statistic to change. So as you wear the hat of parent or grandfather or favorite uncle, I'd like to ask you these questions. How would you feel if your family were in our shoes? What safeguards would you want in place to ensure the safety of both your children and your grandchildren? If you choose to approve the zoning request, we are placing our concerns on public record and adamantly requesting that you use the power you have within your Planning Commission and eventually the City Council to make the following safeguards mandatory. Many of these have been mentioned tonight, so I'll mention them briefly. Absolutely no access on Van Cleve Lane from Trust Point to our neighborhood. If a patient elopement occurs, every homeowner in our neighborhood will be notified by River 911 or text and kept updated until the patient has been found. This request applies round the clock. A tall, aesthetically pleasing security fence will be placed from the corner of the Roscoe Brown property fence down to the proposed berm of landscaping on Van Cleve extending north toward Wilkinson Pike as far as safely allowed. The fence will be heavily landscaped so that we do not have to view the fence or the back of the Trust Point facility from our neighborhood. This fence will encompass the proposed retention pond. If the future of Wilkinson Pike is to expand to three lanes, we request a multi-use access path down Wilkinson for the community and a safe and easily accessible for everyone and every child crossover into the Battlefield. Dr. Woods graciously met with several of us to address our concerns and we have his word, both verbally and in writing, that he will honor these requests. I don't live in the business world. I'm a mom and so I fully realize that just because someone tells you they're going to do something doesn't necessarily mean that they will. And so what we're asking you to consider this situation from a personal perspective. Hold Trust Point Hospital accountable to the word that they have given us and place the safety of every young and seasoned member of our neighborhood in line with the safeguards you would expect for your own children and your own grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wumble. Anybody else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Mr. Chairman Lamb and members of the committee here. I'm speaking, my name is Roger Davenport and I preside at 2116 Harding Place, which is two houses in the back of where this hospital's going to be built. And I've lived there for 30 some-odd years and it's been a great place to raise a family. I've raised, had two children that went over in those woods and there's boulders over there so big you can't put them in a uke, but they'll aim out trails to ride their forelifters. And it's been a dead-end street off of a dead-end street and there's only like seven houses on Harding. But Van Cleve, there's several houses from the corner all the way to the end. And for one house where John lives at 1605 Van Cleve, it's kind of sitting below grade of the road anyway. And I'm just, I've solved the water problems out there for year after year after year of flooding. And all people here, we're all proud of our national heritage and our battleground and I'm so proud that they fixed it from that red light all the way to Broad, that nothing could ever be built there. And the hospital, St. Thomas, that owns the other corner, they built a real nice berm and set the emergency room back and put forestry in and it doesn't bother us any. And, you know, we was wondering at first, but this here seems to be just a little bit aggressive on what they're asking to do. I know their special needs and there's places for them and they bought commercial property fronting a boulevard out there, Thomas and Lane. And I remember when it was just an old tar and chip road, and you do too, Mr. Lamb, and there was nothing out there but an old cell barn. And we used to have to travel hit to get back home from the auction, the Tennessee Auto Auction every Tuesday night. But, and then it did end and then we had to go through the park. But I was noticing, if you could put, if you could put this up on the screen so that everyone could see, this Google picture here where they're showing where the houses is going to come, where they own Van Cleve. And they have one entrance coming off of Thompson Lane. And what they're proposing, this is what they have, and all of this in the yellow, I mean, they're going to like, this is all the new. And they're proposing two, two entrances off of Wilkinson Pike. One of them is right in dead center, right in dead center of where everybody walks and rides their bikes through the park. In fact, it's going to just butt, their entrance will butt right up to that entrance. And all of this green that we see here to the left of this, this is what we're looking, it looks just like this. This here looks just like this before they start cutting down those Civil War trees. There's some trees in there that I know was a good 240 years old and we've lost enough due to tornadoes and storms and developments and we're getting just crowded down to where we're, I mean, we have a great place to raise and raise children and we have two neighbors that have children that is mentally challenged. And I know my time's about up and I'll rush this up. I'm not particularly for or against, but I'd like to hear some more details. And security guards, a lot of these people will be court-ordered there and they told us that there would be no security guards and they never mentioned the fence. And the setback, in my opinion, should be a lot greater. And beside that, just the devaluation of the look of our national park, which is our treasury. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Anybody else?
My name is Mike Weems. I live at 2111 Harding Place. As you can tell, we're a passionate group. I'm a relative newcomer to the area. I've lived there for three years, lived in a lot of different areas, neighborhoods. This is a special neighborhood. I've never lived with a more special group of people. I'm not just saying that because it's affecting my neighborhood. All these people here, they're my friends and some of the people down here are also my friends. It's a community. It's a group of people. Again, I've never lived in a place like this before where, just the other day, we were helping someone clear a tree out of their yard. I have a tractor from an old farm that I like to use every once in a while. It is going to impact our neighborhood. I understand development's going to happen. Trust Point, they were kind enough to meet with us. I do believe that they're going to try and do the things that they say, but as members there, I expect you all to hold them accountable as well. If at all possible, we'd like to leave that intact, our neighborhood. It's just one of those things where, I know there's charts, words, zoning, but there's people involved with this and there's emotion and there's families. And we are considered about, we are worried about safety. They've agreed to do things that we asked. They're going to also provide expert, experts to come out and check our foundations out because as you know, there's, anyone that lives in middle Tennessee knows it's rock, okay? There's going to be a lot of blasting, there's going to be a lot of construction. Our life will probably be a lot of hammering and booming. We get a little bit of that now for about a, probably a good year. So I just kind of want to wrap it up with that, just to kind of let everyone be mindful of that. So, but it's, again, I'll say it one more time, it's a wonderful neighborhood. I have never in my life lived in a place like this. I'm not just saying that, but it really is. It's a special place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else? Last chance.
Mr. Lamb, may I ask a question?
No, sir. I'm sorry. Anybody else? Nobody else coming forward to speak? I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Whitaker, did you make notes of the questions?
I did, sir. And we did have a neighborhood meeting. We had a, we had a great turnout at that. I would ask, I know that there were several comments, safety being one that I've heard over and over. That was actually asked the night of the neighborhood meeting. I would ask that Dr. Woods come up and address, like he did that night, the safety concerns, the number of beds. I understood the number to be not different and I'd heard that it was different numbers, but I think Mr. Woods could shed some light on those and then we can get to the others if you would. Let him finish and then I'll address some of the other issues if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The safety issues that were expressed at our public meeting and in my private meetings with a number of the neighbors primarily involved the concern that a psychiatric patient might elope from the hospital, and that's a term of art in psychiatry to mean that they would escape from the hospital. It's probably important to note that about 70 It's probably important to note that about 70% of our patients are voluntary patients, patients who seek behavioral health treatment or whatever condition is ailing them. About 30% of our patients do come to us on a, what's called a 6404, which is a legal detention, so that they can be evaluated by a psychiatrist to determine whether or not they do propose a threat either to themselves or others, or if they're gravely disabled, which is most often the case, grave disability, meaning that they can't care for themselves and they cannot make adequate decisions for themselves. The hospital, I heard the comment, so I'll respond to that. The hospital has 11 security officers that are part of its staff. More importantly, all of our staff are trained in what is called PMAB, the Prevention and Management of Aggressive Behavior. And these are techniques in which all of our staff throughout the hospital, whether you work in dietary or clinical services, are able to respond to and deal with any issues that may come up within our hospital. The incidence and frequency of those types of issues is almost zero. Statistically, it's nil and we have to report that data. So it's not, it's not been an issue for us and in the four years that we've been in business, we have not had an elopement from our hospital. All of our clinical areas are secure, they're locked, our adult populations are on the second floor of the hospital and there are multiple obstacles that form barriers to their ability to leave the hospital without our consent. Even patients who are voluntary, if they choose to leave the hospital, first must be assessed to determine whether or not we think that that's the right thing for them. And if we don't, under Tennessee statute, we're able to detain them for 12 hours for further psychiatric evaluation to make sure that the patient's okay to leave the hospital. So from a safety standpoint, we have all of these redundant processes in place to protect both the hospital, its staff, the other patients, as well as our community. I would also mention that in this community, we have the VA hospital, which has a substantial psychiatric population. And there have been, in the 30-plus or 40-plus years that that facility has provided services, virtually no issues in our community with respect to the psychiatric population from the Veterans Administration. We are a Veterans Administration providing hospital as well and we take care of those individuals as well as part of our contract with the government. So from a safety standpoint, as I said, we have all of these redundancies. I've met with the neighbors, I've made concessions with respect to things that they would like to see to enhance their sense of security in the neighborhood and we're committed to those things and happy to do those things for them.
There was one question regarding, which I've not heard of before, but a reverse 911 and a texting capability, is that part of your agreement or do you even have that technology to be able to do that?
So reverse 911, I had not heard of before and I'm still, we just had this meeting the last couple of days, I'm still not quite sure what that is. But the alternative that we had agreed to was a, an alert text that would go out to all the neighbors who wish to participate in that. And we have that technology now. We use it for other things, mostly administrative alerts for different things for the hospital. And so we would be able to very simply put the neighbors' phone numbers into our system if there were an incident that we thought could possibly implicate the neighborhood, specifically if a patient were to leave our hospital against our will and against the, you know, our legal authority to detain them, then we would send that mass text out and make sure the neighborhood knew that immediately and keep them informed until the situation was resolved.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Woods while he's up there? Thank you, Dr. Woods.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, you might come up when, readdress the drainage situation if you would. We all are aware of the extreme drainage problem that this area suffered from all my life and we've all seen it underwater at some point or another. So tell us what, how you're going to assure the residents that live nearby that you're not going to exacerbate the situation, hopefully not improve it.
Yes, with Phase 1, and what we explained to the neighbors last, last week at our neighborhood meeting was, we intended to take in a similar approach with this construction as we had with Phase 1. When we first got introduced to Phase 1, the existing hospital, there was a small existing detention pond that was relatively shallow on-site. And what that was managing was the properties to the south of us, the Roscoe Brown, the Team Electric, several of those that drained onto our property. And there had been a detention pond constructed there and managed the runoff from those properties onto the Johnson property to the north, which is part of our application here tonight. And so what we did with Phase 1 was we took, built a much deeper, much larger detention pond to manage that upstream water. And then all of our on-site water, we managed through a permeable paver system where all of our runoff from our roof, the parking lot, all goes down between the pavers and goes back into the ground. So it acted just like it was before and really have no runoff onto the neighbors. And so with our, with the detention pond that we're proposing with this new expansion, we would still look to manage the properties that are to the south of us through that above-ground detention pond and then manage the new impervious or new development through either permeable pavers or other passive systems like bio-retention areas, things that have become much more accepted and standard practice with us over the last 10 years. And so, and then ultimately, as the city reconstructs Wilkinson Pike, they are going to improve that drainage system that is virtually non-existent in Wilkinson Pike right now. They're going to construct a system and we will connect on to that as a, an end-all and the ultimate solution there.
I think Mr. Caperton had a question pertaining to the 50-foot buffer from how it's measured from Wilkinson.
Yes, sir. Along Wilkinson, we will, we don't have 50 feet along Wilkinson. That's along the Van Cleve. Along Wilkinson, we'll maintain at least the 20-foot landscape strip that the gateway requires. My guess is that will be a little bit larger because of the fencing that we've agreed to do along there and the multi-use path. But the 50 feet along Van Cleve will stay the same before or after the improvements of Wilkinson Pike.
Okay, and how would that be measured from Wilkinson Pike? Because they talked about the improvements that are pending on Wilkinson Pike.
That would be measured from the right-of-way. The ordinance requires us to measure those from the right-of-way.
So will, to your knowledge, will the right-of-way be increased any?
The, we will be donating, we have actually submitted a plat to combine these properties. And with that, we'll be coordinating that final plat and any site plans with the right-of-way and then the improvements of Wilkinson Pike because those plans are, I would say, at like a 90% stage right now. And so they're far enough along, we know what that right-of-way is going to be and we'll reflect that and respect that new right-of-way with any design we do.
Mr. Whitaker.
Chairman, if I may, let Mr. Holston talk a little bit about the road improvements and how we have shared those improvement plans with SEC to incorporate that.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Just a quick update, we are at about a 90% design there. We have not started right-of-way acquisition except for properties that have been already developed along Wilkinson Pike. And we'll work very closely, of course, with the design engineer and the design team to make sure that the two mesh very well. Our projection is that we'll look to start acquiring right-of-way in the next 12 months or so and then following that finalize construction plans and go to bid. So we'd like to be under construction next 18 months, 18 to 24 months with our project. Mr. Taylor's characterization of the drainage system along Wilkinson as being nonexistent is pretty accurate. And there's, there's places where there are no existing roadside systems and so the water that does accumulate there impacts the yards, the driveways and occasionally out into the road on Wilkinson. Our roadway designers, we reviewed that very carefully with them and certainly we expect a significant improvement there over what's there today and providing an ultimate outlet for the water that does pond along Wilkinson today to the system that's downstream.
Any, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kurt. Any thoughts, there was one or two questions regarding the walking across or access path and crossover, I'm assuming on Wilkinson Pike to the battlefield. Is there, is there a thought process of the design or what that would look like or if it's even going to be there?
So the, there were a couple of elements mentioned that might enhance access to the battlefield. One of them is a, is a multi-use path. Our plan's already included a five-foot sidewalk along the south side or the project side of Wilkinson. By agreement with the battlefield's couple of previous superintendents, we have tried to remain, what's the word I'm looking for, as close to existing as possible along the battlefield side. This will be a roadway design like none we've constructed in Murfreesboro. It'll be a city street on one side while trying to, along the battlefield, preserve the existing character of the roadway. And so we've, we've made some commitments to the battlefield to be as protective of that frontage through there. All that being said, the five-foot sidewalk was, was already planned. Our, our design team, we've, we challenged our roadway designers to look at that multi-use path, which would go to a bit wider path with a little more separation from the road. And we're looking not, not at just along this property, but actually extending that for the full length of the project up to Gresham Park Drive. And so that provide us good connectivity there. So that will increase the opportunity for bikes, it'll increase the opportunity for pedestrians. We have bike lane, bike facilities currently on Thompson Lane. I think one of our concerns about the existing pedestrian and bike entrance that's old Van Cleve lane on the battlefield is that that will create what we call a mid-block crossing. And those are always very tough on high-volume, higher-speed roadways. And so if we do a, an improvement there, it'll have to be considered carefully. Introducing pedestrians and bicycles into an area where, where they're, they're not expected to be can, can be a difficult thing for us. I'm just looking at the site plan, I think the addition of their main entrance across from that does a couple of things for us, is that it, it gives us another crossing or another place there to actually create a pedestrian crossing in conjunction with the entrance and exit out of Trust Point. And it also gives the visitors or the people arriving and leaving from Trust Point the ability to identify pedestrians who are crossing while they're, while they're leaving or coming into their site. So that, that seems to be the location that might be, that we might be able to enhance that. But the mid-block pedestrian crossings are always very tough for us as far as how we address those.
So how many lanes do you perceive that the road will be going down through there?
Yes, we'll, because of the need for left turns, we'll do two, two lanes with a center turn lane. Obviously, on the battlefield side, that center turn lane will only serve turns going into the existing residence, Van Cleve Lane and also Trust Point Hospital.
So is there potential of having a medium beyond that turning lane? Because obviously if there's no place you can turn to the left if you were traveling away from town, once you've, I guess what I'm looking for is across from Van Cleve, is there a place in that three lanes that you could put a safe spot in the middle of the road so if somebody may halfway across, there would be a stopping point? I know we're talking about a road that's currently, what, 30 miles an hour?
The, I'm not sure the sign speed limit through there, but our-
What's the posted speed limit?
Our posted speed limit, I suspect, is 30 miles an hour. I'm looking to see if our transportation engineer, 40. I suspect our roadway design would be for 40 miles an hour. And, and so, but I think the struggle we're going to have is that, that particular type of divided roadway would require a significant refuge area in there for cars as well. And so it would add probably 12 to 20 feet of additional roadway width for our-
I'm not talking about a medium all the way down the road. I'm just talking about where you're having the crossover.
Yes, I understand, but, but, but we also have to transition in and out of that at speed. So that the extent of that, while, while we may only need to have a protected zone for a small stretch, we've got to transition in and out of that at, at roadway speed or 40, 40 miles per hour. So the, the extent of, of that widening, which would need to be 10 to 12 feet minimum, would, would influence about 200 to 300 feet either side of this, of this particular location. So it's a, it's an ideal worth considering. I think my, our challenge would be finding a way to, to fit that in, the spaces that are allocated there. So I think your point is that, that you'd like to challenge us to look at that pedestrian crossing and then make it as, as a safe place for, if we're going to encourage pedestrian crossing there, we certainly want it to be a-
Right. And I think a halfway safe point, if you could design it into the roadway, would be, would be an opportunity to have somebody who's on a bicycle or even walk and makes it halfway across the street. You know, it's, it's easier to look one direction and make sure you've got a safe point to get to. So I think that would be an opportunity there, depending on where you work the crossway. I mean, I personally don't like the crossway lining up with the old Van Cleve at, that's coming out of the property. I think it should be set away from it if you're going to cross the road there at Van Cleve. But, and it would actually move it more to the center of the property or what looks to be the main entrance into the building if you were to center it on the main entrance there. It, it looks like it would be better from a design aesthetics.
Yeah. From my standpoint, having a, an exiting or entering driver be able to identify pedestrians and bikes coming down Old Van Cleve is as important as having it offset. Because there, there will be, there will be, and there are today, we've heard testimony and I think we've all witnessed, people who use that for recreation and exercise. And, and so there's, you know, there's the potential that someone could be exiting there on a bicycle and, and because of the offset not, you know, our visibility might be limited for somebody coming into or out of the site. So, so I think the aligning of those two is, is a preferred alternative. If we offset it, it needs to be offset very significantly. And so there, there, there are a lot of conflicting movements and the more we consolidate those to one point, I think the better off we are from a, from an operational standpoint.
Yeah, I, I think if, if, if I were making the suggestion, I would move it slightly closer to Thompson Lane so that it lines up with the center and the front of the building there. But, and that moves it away. It also would mean that you would have a space beyond that that would line up with Van Cleve that you could block off because from there until your next turning point, which would be Wilkinson Pike there, I guess, or Van, the current Van Cleve.
Current Van Cleve. And so your, your ideal-
Enough stacking distance there beyond that crossover point that it, it might, it might work, I don't know. You look at it.
Right, and your idea of, your idea of, of the median was not to add the median, but actually convert the existing center turn for a portion to a median.
Exactly.
I see. And then convert it, and then transition back to a, to a left turn onto-
Yeah. It doesn't require any more property, it doesn't do anything but create a safe zone for pedestrians and anybody that might be crossing the roadway.
Yes.
At that point.
Excuse me, Eddie.
The, and, and crossing roadways around the battlefield is certainly nothing new. I mean, if you're the main visiting center for the battlefield, you still have to cross Old Nashville Highway to get to the cemetery and so, and I really can't recall us having a major problem with pedestrians crossing that intersection. I know there's a little yellow flashing light out there now. But, you know, I, I think as, as the city grows, we have to absolutely consider becoming more pedestrian-friendly and, and, you know, I really think if you ride a bicycle on Thompson Lane, well, I'm not going to say when I think you are, you probably should check in here at the hospital, but the, the, but, but once, if we can get pathways that are off the roadway and something that will more coincide with what you would see on the battlefield, I think it makes for a great transitional buffer between the park and the hospital.
Yes. And certainly one of the conversations that, that staff, we're, we have a, a session scheduled with the battlefield staff. And one of the conversations we'll want to have with them is the idea of putting a pedestrian facility on their side. If we're going to enhance access to the battlefield and we have pedestrian and bike facilities on Thompson Lane, seems to me the, the most straightforward way to address that is maybe make sure there's a, a facility on that side as well. To date, they've been very hesitant to, to discuss any sort of impact or improvement beyond the existing edge of pavement on, on that side of the roadway. However, I would, I would encourage them maybe to look at their master planning efforts and what they've done there to increase the pedestrian and bike access at several points along their property and see if there's a way that, that they could perhaps add it into their master plan and allow us to work it into our contract.
I spoke with someone who's worked at the battlefield for quite some time this afternoon and, and talked to them about the effect that they felt this would have and the, I think that agreement that we have is primarily a superintendent thing that some, some of the previous superintendents had said, we don't really want anything changed at all. That may have softened over time because when I was talking to them this afternoon, they seemed to be much more understanding of what the potential would be and, and maybe the safety, safety concern that it would be- the safety concern, that it would be easier to have the pedestrians cross at Thompson Lane and come onto their property there, which would mean maybe the multi-use path would need to be on their side as well.
At least to that entrance.
Right.
I think there's a lot of value in preserving the streetscape and the portion of the battlefield beyond that. And that's certainly within our capabilities. But here at this intersection and for, again, for all the conflicting, competing uses, a short section of multi-use path on their side, I think, would be very beneficial. And I think that's something that our city engineer would appreciate adding to the Wilkinson Pike project.
Chairman, there were two other issues, and I'll be brief. One of the concerns I heard was access to Van Cleve. Early on, when Mr. Taylor come to meet with us, one of the first things we informed him there'd be no access from this property to Van, to the subdivision. We do have a site plan that will be turned in. Staff's very aware of that. We will be assuring that there is no construction traffic or access to that. We understand that. They have agreed to that. The night of the neighborhood meeting, Mr. Woods did agree to put up a fence. This is straight zoning. This is not a planned development, but if they have chosen to do that, he had said that publicly and told them that night, I have full confidence that they will execute what promises they have made. We may not be able to hold them to some of them, but I feel confident that he will. I'm very passionate about this. That's it.
If this was to be approved tonight, it would have to go before the city council for three readings and another public hearing, of course.
Chairman, just two readings.
That's right. We'll change it. Third list. For two readings for the city council, but still, one of them would be a public hearing there where you could still reiterate your concerns to the council. I would hope that between now, if this is approved here, and the council meeting, that the staff could work out some more details on this pedestrian crossing. Mr. Smotherman has some good thoughts about it. I was wondering, I don't know if the warrants would be there, not Mr. Huddleston, but some type of signalization there, whether it's, like you said, a yellow blinking light or maybe even a crossing button there, you know, with some kind of actual stop signal. Maybe Trust Point could help in funding of some of that if the warrants are there and if it's appropriate. I'm just throwing that out to safely get people over there, both walking and on bicycles. And we hope it is used and hopefully the usage on it would warrant it. I'd like to say this about Trust Point. Mr. Williams had said something about holding Trust Point accountable to what they're proposing, what they're saying they're going to do. This commission worked closely with Trust Point on building their current facility. And from my experience and my memory, we were very pleased with the way Trust Point developed that site that they're on now and doing what they said they were going to do, especially with the pavers and everything that they're using there. I personally had a very close friend of mine that suffered a medical emergency and had to be, it's been quite a while there at Trust Point, and that is a fabulous facility. I was so glad we had that in Murfreesboro and that she didn't have to go to Nashville for a prolonged stay. And hopefully, none of us in this room will need their accommodations and need their services. But should you need it, it would be fabulous to have it there. It is definitely an asset for our community.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I wrote down someone asked about underground utilities. Did we address that? I mean, I'd take it all, everything on that side.
No, we didn't. The underground utilities...
Utilities are required to be underground for the development of this property.
I just wanted to state that.
Are you talking about for Trust Point? Are you talking about...
Trust Point.
And I took it that was the question.
Yeah.
That was Mr. Caperton.
Anything else, Bill?
No, sir.
Any other questions from members of the planning commission? If there are no further comments or questions by members of the planning commission, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion is made. And seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I'd like to thank everybody that came and participated in this meeting tonight. Like I said, it will go back before, you'll have another opportunity right before the city council, and that date will be advertised in the future. But thank you for coming tonight.
And Bob, one quick thing. I heard some chuckles when we talked about the speed of people traveling on the roadway. If there is a speeding problem, don't hesitate to give me a call and let me know, and we'll get some police officers out there and get the traffic slowed down because that's a completely different issue than the Trust Point issue. So if you've got a problem with that, please let me know separately, okay? And I'd appreciate hearing from you. Eddie Smotherman. Should be right here in front of us.
Either that, or you can...
Yeah, I'm on the city council, so...
You can also, you can also call the police department and ask for help there. So thank you for coming tonight. We're going to move on to the next public hearing because we have other people waiting here. The annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 13.4 acres located along Veterans Parkway east of Kason Lane are to Van Afra...Afrahta is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is the first of two items on the same property. Property is located in the north side of Veterans Parkway, east of the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Kason Lane. It is directly adjacent to the Three Rivers Storage Development along the north side of Veterans Parkway. Property is in the orange color on the map before you, and you can see that in the annexation request, there is also a substantial amount of Veterans Parkway right-of-way, not only in front of the subject property, but stretching out in front of the Three Rivers subdivision as well. When we were looking at the annexation petition, we noticed that we had not annexed the right-of-way of Veterans Parkway in front of Three Rivers subdivision and Three Rivers Storage when those tracts were annexed about 10 years ago or so. So we've included that right-of-way. The subject property itself, the parcel that's been requested is 9.9 acres. Adding the Veterans Parkway right-of-way increases that to 13.4 acres. The subject property is largely undeveloped, although there is a single-family home and an outbuilding. The property owner, Mr. Afrahta, has requested annexation of the property for future development of the property. And as you'll notice in the second public hearing, there is another buyer who has a contract on the property, a buyer who has a contract on the property and a rezoning request to RM12, but that will be the subject of the next public hearing. This public hearing is simply for the annexation, the annexation petition and the annexation plan of services. You'll notice that there's the annexation plan of services included in your agenda materials. The plan of services indicates that the city will be able to provide services to the subject property upon annexation. In addition, the property owner has petitioned the city for annexation in writing. The property is within the city's urban growth boundary, and it is contiguous to the existing city limits. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions with regard to the annexation. And we do need to conduct a public hearing and vote on a recommendation for both the annexation petition and plan of services.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. There's no other comments or questions. We're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve subject staff comments.
Motion is made. And seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next public hearing is a zoning application for approximately 9.9 acres located along Veterans Parkway east of Kason Lane to be zoned RM12 simultaneous with annexation. Green Hills LLC is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is the same property that we just considered for annexation, 9.9 acres total. The applicants have requested a zoning RM12 simultaneous with annexation. The RM12 zone permits multifamily residential uses at a maximum density of 12 dwelling units per acre. At 9.9 acres, the property has the potential to yield approximately 118 dwelling units. Obviously, if they provide certain amenities, though, they can achieve a greater density to a certain extent. The applicant, Green Trails LLC, does have a contract on the property, and they wish to construct a residential condominium development on the subject property. And included in the agenda materials are elevations of the proposed townhomes and a conceptual site plan. It should be noted that because this is not a planned development, the city would not hold them to the, to the plans that they've submitted. That is purely for informational purposes here at the planning commission meeting to indicate what their intentions are at this point. The subject property is bordered on its west side by the Three Rivers Self-Storage Development, which is zoned PCD, Planned Commercial District. Further to the west and to the north is the Three Rivers PRD, Planned Residential District. And the southern half of the Three Rivers Development is primarily single-family detached lots, smaller lots, about 7,000 square feet or so, 6,000 or 7,000 square feet, I believe. To the south across Veterans Parkway is a largely undeveloped tract used for agricultural purposes. To the east of the subject property are two large, single-family lots. And then further to the east is the Barfield Meadows, Single Family Residential Subdivision, which is located in the unincorporated county. It should be noted that the subject property is just outside of the boundaries of the Salem Pike land use study. The applicants and their team hosted a neighborhood meeting on the request last Tuesday, July 26th. Members of the planning staff were there, as well as about three neighboring property owners were there. With that being said, I believe Mr. Taylor would like to say just a brief word, and then we need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight and make a recommendation to city council.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission, Matt Taylor of SEC. As Mr. Blomley said, we have included a concept plan to show the intent of what we want to do here. These are for-sale townhouses that we want to develop, be owned by individuals, and we are not proposing apartments that are so often associated with this particular zone. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Okay, if there's nothing from the planning commission, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak on this proposal.
My name is Brent Ogles, and my sister and I own the 38 acres on the east side of this development. And we attended the informational meeting last week and looked at the plan on it, and my concern is with the drainage. It shows a drain that goes across this property and terminates on our property or extends over onto our property. There's no existing drain there. There's no natural drain there. It just terminates on that property. My concern there is because of an issue we're dealing with a few hundred feet north of this point where our property joins or borders Three Rivers Development. And the city approved back some time ago a drain coming across from Three Rivers onto our property, and there's no existing drain there, and it discharges onto our property. And we're dealing now with issues and some damages associated with that. So I wanted to address this issue before it becomes an issue like we're dealing with now. So...
Thank you, Mr. Ogles. Nobody? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Huddleston, you want to say anything about the drain?
Certainly, Chairman Lamb. I think we met with the applicant and his design team preliminarily on this property. We did identify a four-by-six box culvert that crosses under Veterans Parkway. I think the idea that there's no existing drainage that comes through there, there's quite, in fact, quite a significant existing drainage crossing onto the Ogles property. And traditionally, it crossed over the top of Old Kimbrough Road, and so the box culvert we installed with Veterans Parkway really allowed the water that come down from the property to the south to cross and follow its existing path. Mr. Taylor's concept plan shows allowing that water to continue to pass through the subject property and onto the point at which it enters the Ogles property. Their particular site design or their site drainage will be managed on-site with their development plan. The upstream water will be passed through really unmanaged, except for the conveyance, the large grass channel that will carry it from the, from the south to the north.
What about the question regarding the drainage coming from Three Rivers prior to this development?
Certainly. We've, we've had conversations with Mr. Ogles, shared all our information with him, shared design concepts with him. And I think maybe he had some additional follow-up with, with Mr. Taylor of SEC and also with Bill Huddleston of Huddleston Steel, looking at some alternatives there. My opinion on it at the time that Mr. Ogles brought it to us is that the amount of water that was discharging to the, to the existing low point there was significantly lower flow rate than what was coming on there before. The drainage in Three Rivers and in that particular section of Three Rivers is very well-managed because of some overflow sizing requirements. The pipe that's stubbed out there is actually, I think, Mr. Taylor, I'm looking to see a 15-inch pipe. But the actual outlet structure that controls the flow to that point is very restrictive through most storm events.
Yes, I believe the, what's coming out on that property is an 18 or 24, going off memory right now, Sam. But it is very restrictive. It's got a low-flow orifice to contain the smaller storms for the water quality, just like all of our new sites. Very large detention facility upstream and still discharges at the current low point. Mr. Ogles has asked us to look at maybe modifying the discharge point to be more along an existing property line, and at the same time, maybe digging a ditch on his side, which will allow us to lower a future pond and future section, what we're termed in Section 8 of Three Rivers. And we're currently working through that design alternative now with him.
Any other questions or comments? Now we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject all staff comments. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next public hearing is a zoning application for approximately, for a property located along Veterans Parkway to be rezoned from RM16 to RS8, approximately 0.77 acres. RM16 to commercial fringe, approximately 0.41 acres, and commercial fringe to RM16, approximately 1.6 acres. Cornerstone Development LLC is the developer. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Subject property is located along the south side of Veterans Parkway. It is located directly to the east of the developing West Wind subdivision, which Mr. Mingi, the, with Cornerstone Development, is currently developing, and the homes are being built quite rapidly in the West Wind subdivision. Back in 2015, Mr. Mingi and his team submitted a rezoning application for the subject property. And at that time, they really had no development plan. They were just requesting the zoning boundaries at where they estimated the best location for those zoning boundaries to be located. But a little bit of history on this property first. It was originally zoned as a PUD called, a PRD called Kimbrough Place back in 2005, and then in 2008, it was rezoned Indigo, which was to be a mixed-use development with commercial and multifamily and single-family residential. The Indigo vision never came to fruition. And then subsequently, Mr. Mingi bought the subject property. The property was rezoned to RS8 from PUD, and there was a, about 25 acres that was RM16 before Mr. Mingi purchased the property. When Mr. Mingi purchased the property, he did rezone a good bit of the property that was zoned to RM16 to RS8 as a part of his West Wind subdivision. It left a certain amount of acreage that was zoned to RM16, and he also requested some commercial fringe as well. So what he's trying to do now is essentially... So what he's trying to do now is essentially clean up the zoning boundaries. And this is a good comparison between the existing zoning of the property and the proposed zoning. So he's slightly reducing the amount of, of commercial fringe, slightly increasing the amount of RM16, and, but also increasing the amount of RS8, too. So the net result is that the CF area would shrink from 3.27 acres to 2.09 acres, and the RM16 area would increase from 8.64 acres to 9.05 acres. And there would be a .77 acre area, which is a detention pond for the West Wind subdivision, that would become RS8 because it serves and is being developed with the West Wind Single Family Residential subdivision. What Mr. Mingi wants to do now is the portion of the property that is zoned RM16, he wishes to develop a townhome development on it, and the portion that is CF, he wishes to build a daycare. Mr. Mingi specializes in, in daycare development, and he feels this is a good location to serve the growing population in the area. And he does not need the three or so acres that the property is currently zoned commercial fringe. He only needs about, about two acres. So in other words, this is basically just kind of cleaning up of the zoning lines that were, the zoning boundary lines that were adopted in 2015. The net increase in RM16 is about, would equal to maximum increase of about seven dwelling units total with the .41 increase in RM16. So just a minimal increase. And much like the last request, the subject property is located just outside of the Salem Pike Land Use Plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Taylor is here representing Mr. Mingi and Cornerstone Development as well.
Okay. No presentation? Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak on this proposal. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. There's no questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next public hearing is a zoning application for approximately 78.4 acres located along Asbury Lane to amend the PRD, which was previously known as Pearling Brook PRD. Beazer Homes is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. The Pearling Brook PRD is one of the last pre-recession land developments that we have that's, that's kind of hanging out there. Located along the west side of Asbury Lane, north of Medical Center Parkway. Property was annexed and zoned PRD back in, originally in 2006. The original plan allowed for 168 townhome units, and then that plan was never developed. And the original developer came back to the Planning Commission and City Council in 2008 and requested to amend the PRD and decreasing the number of townhome units from 168 to 159. And the property has remained undeveloped ever since. Beazer Homes has a contract on the property and wishes to amend the PRD with a completely different vision from what was previously approved for the subject property. And since the subject property has been zoned as a PRD and has not been developed in the, in the 10 years since it was originally adopted, it appears that the existing PRD does not have much utility. Mr. Whitaker and I have met with, you know, while this property was, was being marketed, we probably met with five or six different prospective buyers for the property, some of which wanted to change the townhome concept to an apartment concept, some of whom wanted to increase the density. And we're happy to, we're happy with the, with what Beazer is looking to do on the project. They're actually looking to decrease the density from 159 units as it's currently approved to 138 units. And they will be changing the northern portion of the development from townhomes to single-family detached lots. So there will be 48 single-family detached lots and 90 townhome units for a total of 138 dwelling units, which is a decrease of 30 units from the original 2006 approval and 21 units from the existing 2008 approval. The property is bounded on its southwest side by I-24 and on its south side by a vacant piece of property zoned RS15, both of which are located in the city limits. Further to the south, Asbury Lane intersects with Medical Center Parkway. To the north of the subject property is the Confederate Glen Single Family Residential subdivision, which is located in the unincorporated county. And to the east of the subject property across Asbury Lane is a single-family residence on a large, mostly undeveloped tract located in the, in the county. And also across, also to the east across Asbury are the Ridgefield and Bridleview Single Family Residential subdivisions, also located in the county. Talked a little bit about the density and the change in the, in the plan. Just briefly, the proposed single-family detached lots would be 4,500 square foot minimum size, and the minimum square foot for the homes on those lots would be 1,850 square feet. The minimum square footage for the 90 townhome units would be 1,250 square feet. The previous plan committed to 75% brick, stone, or hardy plank with vinyl allowed on the cornice work. The new plan proposes to change the language to require 100% brick, stone, or hardy plank, i.e. cementitious siding, with vinyl only allowed in the eaves and soffits. The pattern book submitted provides elevations of the proposed townhomes and elevations of the proposed single-family homes. The applicant proposes two deviations, and we went over these deviations in the, during the day work session, from the, from the traditional single-family resident, or excuse me, from the traditional zoning regulations. The first is, instead of using a compactor for its solid waste, they do propose to use a dumpster. The city zoning regulations requires that multifamily developments with greater than 75 units and townhomes, even though they are individually owned, are considered a multifamily development, to have a compactor. And instead of that, they are requesting to have a dumpster instead. Second, our zoning ordinance requires that on single-family residential lots, that there be four off-street parking spaces, not including garage parking spaces. The applicants wish to have a 20-foot front setback instead of a 35-foot front setback, for example. The 20-foot front setback would accommodate only two off-street parking spaces. So staff has worked with the developer to include, include language in the program book that the garage spaces must be available at all times for the parking of two vehicles so that they can meet their four off-street parking space requirements. In addition, there were two items that were outstanding at the time that we wrote our staff comments, and I have placed a letter from Mr. Ryan Lovelace with Civil Site Design on your tables in front of you. The two issues that staff tasked the applicants with working on were including oversized garages. Because they are small lots and because the garages are required to accommodate two vehicles, we wanted oversized garages so that the minimal amount of storage space that would be needed, say for a garbage can and a lawnmower, would be able to be accommodated. And what they've done, as you can see in the letter, is they are committing to a minimum 23-foot depth garage, which adds about an extra three feet to the garage in depth to allow for a, a minimal amount of household storage that will be needed. Secondly, in our RZ developments, we require 50-foot ride-aways with 36-foot of pavement width, and that is to accommodate any on-street parking that occurs. And they have reviewed their plans, and they're able to accommodate those 50-foot ride-aways, and they are committing to that in this letter that they have provided. They've made known in the letter that if they receive a favorable recommendation from the, from the Planning Commission tonight, they will incorporate those changes in the next draft of their program book, which would go to City Council. Before we conduct the public hearing tonight, Mr. Ryan Lovelace with Civil Site Design would like to make a brief PowerPoint presentation, and Mr. Brad Ganto with Beazer Homes is also available if you have any questions for either one of them.
Good evening. I'm sorry, Ryan Lovelace, Civil Site Design. Let me try to pull this up real quick. We're proposing, again, Pearling Brook, and Matthew took a lot of my, my thunder tonight for all the, the information. He's done a good job about explaining everything that we're doing. But I would like to go through just a few things, a few slides to, to show, show y'all and show the neighbors what we're proposing. This is the original plan that's currently approved. Like, like was said, 159 townhome units, multifamily. There was townhomes, there were duplexes, there was fourplexes, there was a mixture of different townhome units. Mostly 75%, I think, was the commitment for materials for brick and stone before, 75%. But again, it was all multifamily before, and Beazer has graciously come in and decided that that was a little intense, a little dense, thinking that, you know, a mixture of townhomes and, and having single family in there would probably be better, not only for the market's conditions, but also just kind of more of a consistent with the neighborhood, not so multifamily. This is our plan. A lot of this is consistent with the original plan. We still have a tremendous amount of open space that you see there in green on the other side of the creek. I think it's 70% of our project is open space, again, 70%. We have a large amount of trail system in that open space. And if, as you can see, we have now the multifamily townhome portions of the project along the creek, the single family in the north end, and then a amenity center and pool in the center. This is a close-up version of that. Again, we've reduced the density from 159 units down to 138, a mixture of a, a single family and the multifamily. These are combined townhomes in fourplexes and fiveplexes, some six, but they are combined townhomes with garages. And everything in this, for townhomes and multi, or the multifamily and the single family are for sale. They are not rentals. We're providing the 48 single-family units and then 90 townhome units. This is some of our products that we're proposing. The left picture is our entrance, stone monuments, some ornamental fencing on, on both sides as you enter our project. We have two entrances. We're proposing turn lanes on both those entrances and between the two, in essence, is a three-lane section. There's really not enough room to transition down, so it's a three-lane section between the two entrances. Again, turn lanes on both of them. You see our ornamental mailboxes and our street lights, which is pretty consistent with a, a project of this caliber. And of course, the architectural elevations that Beazer is proposing. Again, it was before 75% brick or stone and masonry products. We're proposing 100% brick, stone, masonry, hardy board products here, new vinyl siding. And we've committed to the oversized garages, the 23 feet in depth, and, and then also the additional width of the road in the single-family area, which allows for the parallel parking. So we have parking in the garages, parking in the driveways, and now parking in the streets. So we feel that we have adequate parking now. The reason for the request for a 20-foot setback on the front rather than 35-foot, which is, has been the standard, the 25, the 20-foot front is simply just to allow us to put the single-family homes in this project. There's not a lot of depth from the north to the south to the creek. So in order to fit single family in here and to fit the homes in this, in this project, we needed a, the 20-foot front. And in lieu of doing the, the parking in the driveways, I guess by code, we're going to do the, the additional width and the, the depth in the garage and then additional width in the roads to accommodate the parking. And then, like Matthew said, we're going to commit to put down our HOA regulations as well as the, the PUD that you hopefully will approve tonight. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have, and we are asking for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lovelace? Thank you. We may have some after the public hearing. There's no questions at this time. I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Karen Bauer. I, my sister and I own the property directly across the street from this proposed development, and it's been in the family almost 60 years. I have deep roots here. I was born here, went to campus school, went to Central, and I went to Riverdale. So I have a lot of, we have a lot, deep roots here. My concern, we went through this about eight years, eight years ago, and for the record, we were not against, you know, the annexation, and we aren't now. I mean, we're not against the development at all now. Our concern is the traffic. And a, a lot has changed in eight years, and I don't have to tell y'all that. You know that better than anybody, especially in that area. And every day, when I turn left onto Asbury Lane, or I turn left going onto the Parkway, I hold my breath and floor my car and hope that nobody hits me. And I've seen two buses almost get slammed this last year there. And there's times when I'm coming from Franklin that I'll just go on 840 and get off of New Nashville Highway there just to avoid, avoid that there. You're looking at maybe, I'm guessing, maybe 200 cars that are going to be across the street from me. And by the way, I hope the developer will keep the road clean. And Mr. King, I understand, has, his property adjoins ours, and he's, I think they're going to, they're thinking about annexing also to the city, and that's about 111 more houses. So you're looking at maybe 400 cars coming through there and no light or anything. I just want some reassurance that you're going to do something before somebody gets killed, okay? Before some kids get killed, or, you know, me, of course, but anybody gets killed there. It's, it's, it's scary there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm Jim Bauer, and I live at 3507 Asbury. And when we, when I moved in there, I mean, it's terrible. Have y'all ever tried to make that? You know where I'm talking about. And about a month after I moved in, I called the traffic director. And I wasn't nasty. You know, I just said, hey, this is ridiculous. And he goes, well, we were going to close it. It's better than closing, didn't it? I'm not so sure it is. I wish y'all would go and try to get in and out of there. And if any of y'all are from that, I mean, it scares you to death. You start dreading it about 10 miles before you get to it. So y'all do me a favor. Next week or so, try to navigate that, that intersection. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Traffic, we run into that all the time everywhere around town, particularly in areas where the city has grown out onto substandard county-built roads such as Asbury Lane. Is there anything on Asbury Lane planned for the future, Mr. Whitaker?
Chairman, I'll actually let Mr. Hollison speak on that, but before he does, I'd like to point out just a few issues. We do know there's some issues with Asbury, but this project was approved, and there is a zoning entitlement from- is a zoning entitlement from, I'm going to say, seven, eight years ago. They are proposing to change the plan, but they're reducing the number, intensity. But there is an entitlement where they could actually build what was approved at the capacity it is now. Now, I know that doesn't fix the road, but I just wanted to make sure that that was clearly understood, that there is a zoning entitlement on this development today, and they are proposing to reduce it. At this time, I asked Mr. Holliston if he would speak on Asbury.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. I think Mr. Bauer's idea that the traffic's very rough there, we're aware of that, and certainly have been monitoring that. I think I would like to see if Mr. Balachandra would come up and just give us a quick background on some of the recent traffic studies, traffic counts we've seen in there, and maybe help us understand the magnitude of the problem. And then we can talk just briefly about some concepts we're working on at the city level for that particular location. Mr. Balachandra, if you want to share a little bit about some of the recent traffic studies and your experience with this intersection.
We have had, when Pearl Brook was approved, I think there was, when Pearl Brook was approved a few years ago, I'm not sure exactly when, we did see a limited traffic study about their development. But since then, we have had some requests for some other development. Recently, there was a development just to the north, I would say to the, I would say to the northeast of this, of Ashbury and Medical Center Parkway. We evaluated, I evaluated, the traffic study that was presented. The level of service from those, that study indicated that that is not very desirable. We accept anywhere between C and D for the level of service. It's a delay-related study, and this provided us with the existing condition, a level of service of F. We understand that there is some difficulties making left during the peak hours, and the alignment, you know, if you remember, this has a long history. When we built Medical Center Parkway, Ashbury was realigned. It came at a very awkward angle. We tried to get it away from the interstate right-of-way and got it to a point where it came in at a 90-degree, but it's still awkward. There is a little bit of a vertical and horizontal curve there. We had master-planned, Mr. Richardson had many discussions with the property owner that's at the corner, which is the Williamson Farm, that when that develops, Ashbury will be realigned and tied, and will be tied into the signal at Conference Center Boulevard. But there's no movement at that property right now, so our hands are tied because that's not city property, that is, you know, private property. So we really don't have an immediate answer for the traffic problem currently.
Okay, Mr. Balachandra. Any questions for Mr. Balachandra?
Thanks, Ram. I think the level of service that he described is F, and we all know that that's functioning very poorly. Some of the typical remedies that we might see at an intersection like this are just not available to us here because of the closeness to the interstate. You know, there's been a request for signal, Ram, I think in the past.
Yeah, I think I should touch on that, Sam. Thank you for reminding me. The signalization, it is, you know, normally we would like, and traditionally, for a signal for progression, especially on a major arterial, we like the distance from signals to be about 1,200 to 1,300 feet. We only have less than about 900 feet between the signal at the on-ramp and this intersection. And that's the reason why when we master-planned that, we had the fourth leg on Conference Center Boulevard so that that will be tied in, that realigning Ashbury to tie into the existing signal, which is a three-leg signal.
And so some of the traditional methods are not available to us, but our view on it is that the long-term answer here is a connection to a Conference Center Boulevard extended and access to that signal, and then also modification of this intersection would be preferred in our minds to prohibit left-out and left-in, making it function as right-in, right-out. We are challenged with the property ownership right now, and the Williamson Farm, if you're familiar with that situation, we've seen no real direction of development, no real interest in pursuing that for development. We think that might change in the near future, but we're doing our front-end work with concept plans and spacing and separation, and also looking at the Wilkinson Pike project as a potential tie into that as well, to give us some alternate access even opposite of Med Center. All that being said, what we are working on is a concept. I'm going to glance over at Mr. Schmutherman and just plant a seed here that you're going to be hearing from staff, we think, in the near future on maybe getting this on some priorities for funding and for design and construction. But we certainly have to get through some property ownership and right-of-way issues long before we can talk about what we're going to build.
Okay.
Chairman, I can assure you that staff, and I know Mr. Richardson's not here, and we have a new traffic director, but we have continued to work on this situation. Myself is continuing to work on it, and we hope that we can come to some improvements to this with the landlord's help. And again, we are going to continue to work toward a resolve of this issue. I would like to say that we've never stopped. We just hadn't got there yet, so.
Well, Mr. Bowers, you've heard the discussion, Mrs. Bowers, and we certainly sympathize with the problems out there pertaining to that substandard road and the intersection. I'm sorry, we can't have any more discussion on Mr. Bowers. I'm sorry. But the question is tonight, the proposal is for this amendment to the PRD for Pearl Brook, which actually reduces the number of units there by 21 units and reduces the density by 2.16 to 1.9 dwelling units per acre. So if anything, you know, that's better than what they could build on it right now without coming before this body and without having a public hearing. They could go right ahead and build the larger development. So this at least will not exacerbate the traffic as bad as it would have if it had been built as it was approved. So we need to move on with this because we have another public hearing scheduled. But remember, the city staff, the planning department, and the city engineers department are always available to talk to if you folks want to get a group together and come in and talk to them about that. If there's no other questions or comments on this, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for approval of this plan.
Second.
Motion is made in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now for the final public hearing tonight is a zoning application for approximately 1.5 acres located along East Main Street and Jupiter Place, to be rezoned from RS15 to RM16, East Main Quarters partnership is the developer, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Subject property located at 1620 East Main Street is located at the southwest corner of East Main Street and Jupiter Place. The subject property is currently zoned RS15, and the applicants have a contract on the property and are requesting it to be rezoned from RS15, which is single-family residential, to RM16, which is multifamily residential with a maximum density of 16 dwelling units per acre. Directly to the west of the subject property is the East Main Quarters apartment complex, and the applicants are the developers of East Main Quarters. East Main Quarters is nearing completion. The East Main Quarters development is zoned RM16, and the applicants are requesting like zoning so that they can build a second phase of the existing development on the 1.5 acres located at the corner. 1.5 acres in the RM16 zone could yield a maximum of approximately 24 additional dwelling While the northwesternmost 0.75 acres of the East Main Quarters property was rezoned to RM16 in 2015, the majority of that property has been zoned RM16 and its precursor RML since at least the 1980s. East Main Quarters consists of 63 four-bedroom dwelling units on 5.66 acres. The property is bordered on its west side, as mentioned previously, by RM16 zoning, and further to the west are two parcels that were zoned to CF located on the corner of Baird and Main that were rezoned to CF back in 2015, last year. West of Baird, along the south side of Main, are several older apartment complexes zoned RM16. There are several, there are single-family residential lots zoned RS15 to the south of the subject property, and there are also large single-family residential lots zoned RS15 located to the north across East Main Street as well as to the east across Jupiter Place. The applicants and their design team hosted a neighborhood meeting at Patterson Park on June 20, and members of the planning staff and approximately signature-dipping property owners were in attendance to discuss the plans. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing tonight and then formulate a recommendation to city council. Members of the development team, Mr. Elliott and Mr. Gilbert are here, if you have any questions for them as well.
Do they have any statements they want to make before the public hearing? Okay. In that case, I'll open the public hearing. I know we've got quite a few people left here, and I have the sneaking suspicion quite a few of you will want to speak. Please keep your comments as brief as possible so we can get everybody back home at a reasonable hour tonight. That being said, I'll invite you to the microphone to speak. Thank you. Yes, we can see them.
Ma'am, you have an extra one for our file?
Here you go.
Is this looking from Hobgood School?
It's looking from Baird.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Deborah Richards, and I live at 1621 East Main Street, and I wasn't invited to the neighborhood meeting, so I hope you'll cut me a little slack here because this is my only opportunity to be able to share with you, and I'm speaking on behalf of some concerned citizens as well. A municipality is a collective of people that self-govern. It comes from a word meaning "social contract" or "duty holder." I'm thankful that I am afforded a voice in what decisions are made on behalf of where I live. And as members of the Planning Commission, I hope, actually, I see that you take seriously the social contract that you have with me, a property owner of this city. There are several reasons that I'm opposed to this rezoning. As I studied the effects of zone changes in cities, I came across an interesting quote, "When well-designed and appropriate to the neighborhood, rezoning to a multifamily use does not diminish property values." I realized that this was the problem as soon as I read it. I've shown you a picture of the Allen's home, and as you can see, it is towered over by structures that are placed in their backyard, and theirs is one of many. Even though the staff comments list the complex as 63 four-bedroom units, the complex actually has over 120 individually rented dormitory-style rooms that share a common space. This is not in keeping with the residential neighborhood that has fed Hobgood School for 60 years. I'm sure the argument would be that these were built for college students. In fact, they advertise as being adjacent to MTSU, but that is not true. They are actually surrounded by single-family dwellings. And more so, the complex has been placed on a road that is described as substandard. The developers were not even required to build sidewalks on their own property facing East Main Street. They were assessed the money for sidewalks to be built when the road was improved, according to the city manager, the city engineer, excuse me. But there is no plan in place for that improvement, according to Mr. Griffin, who I talked to. That means that there are 240 persons in an area that used to serve maybe six. That's a 4,000% increase, and we have not really seen what the ramifications of that will be until they reach full occupancy and MTSU semester begins. While they tried to squeeze in a turn lane, it'll hold three cars at most, and while pedestrian traffic will clearly increase, there is not an infrastructure in place to accommodate them. There are no sidewalks, no walkway, no bike lane. Prudence would call for us to raise the infrastructure before any further development is considered so that the city of Murfreesboro might not be culpable in allowing an unsafe environment to exist. It's hard to discuss this matter without referring back to the original sin. Many people have shared with me how the seller's property was originally rezoned to RM16. The Planning Commission, the duty holders of the day, denied that request more than once, and I appreciate their thoughtful decision. And yet, the good old boy network was alive and well then, and so the change was passed to the benefit of that family, but maybe not necessarily to the community as a whole. I ask you please not to fall victim to the sunk-cost fallacy. Please don't think that because this has already been done that we should go on and allow it to grow. I've been a teacher for many years, and last week at a conference, I heard something that was applicable to me to this decision. I'll paraphrase. We all want to do what's best, and the problem is that sometimes we want to grab on to the things that are measurable, but many times, the things that are valuable are not measurable. I understand why the Shackelfords want to move. Their home no longer feels like home. I wish them well, but I cannot condone that more of the same be built. It's hard to measure the value of my home to me. My daughter was married there, and my late husband's handiwork is everywhere, and I would not leave it without grieving severely. Other homeowners around me feel the same, and I know that we have a dog in the race, but I cannot tell you how many people have approached me in the last year saying that they could not believe that the city allowed those dorms to be built on Main Street, people who don't live nearby, but who just knew that the value of their Main Street and the borough had somehow been cheapened by these structures. The planning department explained to me that this development fits the rules, the measurable, but it is not in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. Here's the immeasurable, but valuable.
Evra.
Historic homes that should be protected.
Evra, you need to wrap it up, please.
Multi-generational family homes that have more than just property value, a school neighborhood, and the city's Main Street. It seems to me that this request at this time, under these circumstances, should be denied, and I'm asking you to vote accordingly. The Planning Commission of the 80s voted no. Please keep your social contract with us. Be the duty holders for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Please, please do not make applause. Next person, please.
My name is William Haynes, Bill Haynes. I live at 1725 East Main Street, which is about 150 yards from the property across the road. I have lived some 50 years at my home, and I have seen all the neighborhood become a lot different from what it is now, but never has I seen what has happened since they built those apartments next door to this property. They have elevated the land, they have changed the topography of the land so that it is no longer a hill on that side, it's flat. Now, the property we're talking about is a hill. If you drive up and go up Jupiter Place, you see where you come to a place at the top of the hill where there's a division of the road. There's going to be a lot of people on that road if we build more apartments in that place where you're talking about becoming not family dwelling, if you want it to become apartments. I think we have plenty of apartments here for the students here. On Rutherford Boulevard, there's been dozens of new developments where the students are bused in. All I'm saying is that our community has been a beautiful neighborhood. That property has about 18 beautiful homes, beautiful trees, longstanding trees, that if it is changed, my guess is, just like they did the other property, the Sellers' property, that will be completely demolished, all those trees. The landscape will be changed from a hill to a flat elevation right looking down on East Main Street. I think there will also be students that will park on Jupiter Street right there to get to visit their friend right there, and that will cause all kinds of traffic problems. As you go up the hill, you'll see where the division happens and where you go to Minerva, then on to, further to Jupiter. But what's going to happen is, there's going to be a lot of, a possible inclusion of the, the building of that property will include access at Jupiter. Not just East Main Street, but Jupiter. That will cause that many more problems with the traffic going to and fro. I have here a document signed with 19 homeowners in the area, and I'd like to present it to the commission with gratitude that they understand that this is requesting, all these 19 homeowners are asking it to be, remain RS15. I have found that since that apartments have been built next door, there has been an increased number of traffic on Womack Lane, more so than ever. I walk that road every day, and I'm saying that that has become almost an unbearable problem, just going back and forth. Traffic is very bad.
Okay, Ms. Richards, if you'll give that to the staff up here, they can pass it around to the Planning Commission.
Yes.
We will need to keep that, sir.
And I appreciate you saying the request. This is, we have plenty of apartments that are used, homes that are used.
Your time is up.
For apartments next door.
Your time is up, so we need to move on.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
My name is Michael Humnicki, and I live in Daffodil Hill, historic mansion on 1710 East Main Street. These comments were basically put together with my wife and I. I think philosophically, they will agree with the other people that are going to speak here, but I just want to preface my comments by saying these specifically are for myself and my wife. We object to the rezoning of this property on East Main Street from single-family to multifamily for the following reasons. To our knowledge, no study on the impact of increased multifamily development has been done. We believe that more apartments on East Main Street will have far-reaching effects and will be detrimental to the area as a whole. A formal study should be done and distributed to the greater neighborhood, not just to those whose properties are 250 feet from existing property, and should address the specific need for additional off-campus housing for MTSU students. We object to the incremental approval process being implemented and approved by the Planning Commission. Please stop this process and listen to the greater neighborhood residents. Additional apartment housing will affect the neighborhood by increasing traffic, foot traffic, and accessibility to the Hobgood Elementary School students in the morning and afternoon. As it is now, East, as now, East Main Street is getting very congested, and there are no sidewalks for pedestrians or bike paths for bicycles. It is already dangerous for pedestrians and students attending the elementary school via Jupiter and Minerva and the MTSU via Womack. By the way, I would like to suggest that it was very convenient for the developers to build and get the apartments built before MTSU comes back in the fall. So I don't think we've seen the increased pedestrian traffic that's going to be a result, even from the existing apartments. The increase in population resulting from more apartments will impact the areas of services provided by the city, put a strain on water, sewer services, street maintenance, necessity of increased police monitoring. Public school system will certainly have to service more students, breakfast and lunch programs, after-school care, and require hiring more teachers. These issues were not effectively addressed when you previously addressed the development of this apartment complex, and still, in our opinion, require your attention. Rezoning of this property for additional development would impact the greater neighborhood. The construction of these apartments have been a significant increase in light pollution in the area. The cause of this was the destruction of mature trees that could have shaded the spillover glare from the apartment exterior lights into the surrounding homes. The apartment seemed to have a lot more exterior lighting than existing single-family dwelling homes. We strongly encourage you to carefully consider the city's ability to address these issues and determine whether the issues impacting the city should require the developer to directly share in the costs of these impacts. The increase of the neighborhood population resulting from additional residents will impact the desirability and stability of the existing single-family homes on East Main Street. This needs to be understood and appreciated before any rezoning is approved. Please address these concerns and cost impacts when you make your final decision. With the current information and the developmental processes, we object to the proposed rezoning of this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humnicki. Who would like to be next?
My name is Jeff Ward. I live in 1615 Jupiter Place. It's right between the new apartments and Hobgood Elementary. And so, basically, when you walk out, and let me point out too, I bought it in January, so I knew what I was in for. So I'm not complaining about the location at all. What I would like to do is let you know what it's like living back-to-back with these customers. And for the most part, it's not bad. It's a, you walk out in your backyard, and it's sort of like being on that game show, Hollywood Squares. You know, you've got the X's and the O's, and you've got stars in the different compartments. And, and you know, the clientele over there, they're just beginning to fill up. There's only, you know, two or three tenants in there so far. And they're good clientele, they're just kids, they're out there studying, they're talking to their friend or whatever, and it's not bad, you know, hi, you've just got more people to say hi to. And it hasn't been bad in that way. But my grievance with them has been this. They, there was a fence there when, when I bought the property, and during their excavation, they, they tore up the fence. Well, you know, I could probably fix the fence for 150 bucks. But, you know, I contacted them on three different occasions, and I said, you know, would you be a good neighbor to me? Would you just fix what you tore up? And I can't get them to return my call. And so, I guess my plea to you would be, you know, for these other people that may end up being neighbors with these same people, encourage them to be a good neighbor. If, you know, if we're going to live together, be a good neighbor to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm Rick Michelson. I live at 303 Minerva, which is at the corner of Minerva Drive and Jupiter Place, right around the corner from this property, semi-cross from it. I think part of the commission's responsibility is not only to follow the law, but also consider design and aesthetics. And I think if you've been out there, you would agree with me that the aesthetics of that property are totally, there's no way to describe it, but an eyesore in that area. They did nothing to screen from the single-family homes or provide any type of buffer. They have shown no respect for the neighborhood in terms of that. They will increase traffic. I know that during rainstorms, about once every third rainstorm, somebody spins out at the triangle intersection in front of my house, and the increased traffic is going to cause problems there, and sometimes they end up in my front yard, and nobody pays to fix it except me. I think that anyone with any design intellect would say that it was a mistake to put that property there. In my business, if y'all don't know, I'm a physician. In my business, when we make a mistake, we fix it, we don't expand it. And I think that adding further to this rezoning would do nothing but expand the error. And I urge you, I realize you don't have a way to take it out, but please don't expand it. And if you do expand it, would you give our neighborhood an idea of how far you want to keep expanding it in the future? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Michelson. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Stan Vaught, 6675 West Tremble Road in Melton. Some of you may wonder, well, why does somebody in Melton care? This is my community as much as it is anybody else's. I may not vote here, but I'm a taxpayer here. My wife and I own property very nearby. And one of the most important things, I think it says about our community, is our dedication to our downtown area, our historical community. Terry and I are members of the Oakland Society and very much enjoyed supporting that. My tenure on the county commission, and my tenure on the county planning commission, I always took great pride in the development of the downtown area. The Main Street project and being able to guide people, and Mr. Lamb knows this as well as I do, the people that come to our community that want to buy homes, one of the first things that they do will be to visit our downtown area, visit our historic courthouse, and gander at everything that has been done down here. And I look at this area as an extension of that. It's always been Main Street. Main Street doesn't stop at Middle Tennessee Boulevard, it goes all the way to Rutherford and beyond. So this is a community, it's part of our community. And that continuation of this historical downtown area, I think, was so much diminished by the site plan that was approved. We all know how the zoning was done, there's no sense in hashing that out again. But I think it's this body's obligation to really strongly look at site plans. 35-foot-tall structure next to single-family, one-story houses was probably not appropriate. And I, like all these residents, unlike all these residents, I don't have to look at it every day. But I do want to continue to enjoy my downtown area, and I think it's one of our most valuable assets. And so I would strongly urge you to, to not approve this. I don't blame the owner, I don't blame him a bit, or his family, they have lived there many years, they're good people of this community, and I understand their dilemma. The Elliott family out of McMenville, they're good folks, they build a good product. But this is not the right product in the right area. Dormitory-style living on historical Main Street, I don't think is appropriate, and so that I would ask you to vote no. And some of you may justify this, you may say, well, we've already got RM16 next door to it, it's easy to go ahead with it. Well, I would tell you like my father told me one time, you know, the horse is out of the barn, but you still got to go back and fix the fence, okay? Don't continue to let the fence go. The gentleman that, that bought Kirby's house, several of you here know who I'm talking about, Mr. McNabb, that used to own the property, very dear friend of ours. And I dare say, if he was still around with us tonight, he would have warned every one of y'all out for the past two weeks on this. So that's a perspective from somebody that lives in the county, and again, I would, I would encourage you to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Vaught. Anybody else?
Well, good evening, good long evening it's been. I'm Charlene Taylor, and I live at 816 East Main Street. I've grown up in Murfreesboro. I'm one of, my two first cousins lived on East Main Street. One was the vice mayor, John Pitterd. Main Street has a real unique place in our community. But tonight, we're not talking about one house or one piece of property. We're talking about a community that has to reach back to the formidable plans of what really did build, and is continuing to build, Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. We have forsaken the downtown in many ways, but it's coming back. It's coming back because each of you, I believe, has a, an understanding that many are looking at Murfreesboro. We're a national statistic, and we have some national viewpoints. But it's paramount that we realize that there's a domino that was placed on Main Street in a most unfortunate way, and that's those apartments that have been talked about. But if we allow that next door, that next-door property to be opened up to more, I call them, forgive me, tent dwellers, these are folks that are not here in the long term, they're students. And I'm glad that they have a place. But this begins a formidable change to our downtown. But what it really says is that you're going to be speaking to Murfreesboro. If you choose to move forward and move away from a single-family dwelling, it's what this committee, this, the body here, says that Murfreesboro believes in its historical district, in its Main Street. In the Main Street vision, what we don't have here is a footprint of a real plan. What we have is a lack of vision. We must come to the center now. This is a primary, pinnacle, very important decision that you'll make. I appeal to you, I wasn't asked to sign that, but I would like to place my name, Charlene Taylor, on that list of 19, please. I appeal to you to gather the energy for vision for the downtown as only you can do, and you're trusted to do it. You're trusted to do it. I appreciate every one of you and the opportunity that you've given us this late evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Would anybody else like to speak?
I'm Sandra Benson. I live at the corner of Womack and Elrod, 1703 Elrod, I front on Elrod. My garage is on Womack. Usually about every seven or eight days, I go down to Main Street, pick up breakfast wrappers that the traffic throws out. And sometimes it's difficult to get out of my garage because Womack Street traffic is busy, busy, busy. Wish I'd known that before I bought 18 years ago. And I can only imagine with these new residents that it's going to be much worse when school starts next week or whenever. And I just really wish the Sellers' property had never been rezoned. Think it was the major mistake you all made.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Anybody else?
My name is Mitzi Michelson, and I live at 303 Minerva Drive. I just wanted to add one thing to my husband's comments. I wasn't aware that there was a meeting. Rick did see the notice and told me that originally what they sent out was not multifamily. Three days before the meeting, they sent out the notice. Three days before the meeting, they sent out the notice saying it was multifamily when there wasn't time for anyone to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michelson. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Henry Phillips. I live at 327 Minerva Drive, which is approximately a city block from the proposed rezoning. I've lived there with my wife for nineteen years. And as some of you know, I worked in the downtown area for over thirty years. And this was our root home down Main Street for the last nineteen years. We traveled this road multiple times daily for this period of time. So I'm very familiar with East Main and familiar with this corner where this proposed development is. I love East Main. That route has brought a lot of joy to me and I know a lot of people that live there at the same. I was talking to a friend of mine the other day and we were discussing all the things in this world that brought joy to you and how important it was to have those and not let them go. And it was, it's been a very enjoyable route going from my business to my home every day and down Main Street. I can't think of a better route than anyone could take to work or home. The history, the beauty, it's just, it's just so much joy there. And I remember going home and I would pass the seller's property and I would feel that joy once again. It was a joyful experience looking at the seller's home. It was beautiful. That landscape was perfect. It was that rolling hill, the house was beautiful. And I no longer can experience that joy. It's gone. And I don't want to lose any more. I appreciate the joy that I had. I contrast this development with the other end of Main Street. Downtown revitalization, Main Street project. And I know we've, several have mentioned this and I don't mean to plug Main Street, although I do, I would love to do that because it's, Main Street has been, has been a great thing for the downtown. You think of what it's done. It's, we've revitalized the, our downtown economically. We've restored buildings and it's just been a great thing. And we still maintain the character and integrity of our downtown. And I think we could do the same thing with the other end of Main Street on this property. I just think there's creative minds out there that could do something with this property that would still maintain the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Mr. Phillips? Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman. Everybody else, good evening. Glad you guys are all still awake with us. So quiet in here. My name is Douglas Cook, currently serving on the TV Commission, also part of the study for the bottoms. I live on 204 Apollo Drive. I've been here for now about ten years. And I just got into town. I've gone through my mail. I'm pretty sure I did not get the letter as well about the meeting. I probably should sign the permission as well. Several red flags, not a lot of information about what this is going to be. I'm not quite sure if this vote is, as far as is there going to be another one after this or if this vote happens today, is it locked in? Some plans would be really good. I don't know if they're going to present something. But from my angle, father of four, this neighborhood has, I mean, the whole city block pretty much, Apollo Drive, there's no sidewalks, traffic is increasing. I agree with everybody else. When school comes in, this is all going to build up. Coming off of Mercury, turning onto Apollo, going north, there's no turn lane. It's like Russian roulette, trying to stop and turn onto a street, which I frequent all the time. But at a four residence, one of which is pretty much vacant, there's a lot of traffic on Apollo alone. Capitalism is good. The area's been building up. Everything, we got a plank coming in, Dunkin' Donuts. Property's going crazy as far as, in just ten years that I've seen, the traffic on Apollo is really busy. It's everybody cutting through. I have a lot of people walking through, no sidewalks. It's just a concern that I'm not sure what the city's plan is to help partner with the development plan. Other than that, I'm just, I see red flags, not a lot presented on what this plan is. I agree with the seller. They don't have much to look at. If that seems to be the case, that coming down the line, moving east, if everybody becomes apartment, you know, a high-density level of people now in this area, I have a long property line. I can see that happen to me as far as if another property goes. So I think, once you guys go through the questions, I just want to know, is this it as far as the vote? If so, I would like to vote no. And just want to know your feedback on sidewalks and high-density questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Anybody else?
Thank you. My name is Doug Hooper. Currently live at Jones Boulevard, but this home's very emotional thing. I hate to see, I would hate to see it torn down. My father built this house. Built in 1952, Warner Hooper. He was the chief architect for Bell Brothers and Company Lumber of Murphysboro. Before he was that chief architect, there was WR Bell Jr. that built James K. Polk Hotel. My father was part of the one, he was architect then that built the old jail on the West Main. Both of those are gone. Both those are torn down. Anyway, I just, it would be very, it's just a shame. It's a shame to see your home place is probably just going to get torn down. I mean, I don't have any, I mean, I'm not an owner of it now. My mom sold it when I was fourteen. Father died when I was thirteen, or just about thirteen. That's all I really have to say. I just want to keep it kind of brief, but I just feel like it's a shame. I'm here to support our neighborhood, the neighborhood of this home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Anybody else?
My name's Steve Westbrook. I live at 311 Minerva Drive. And I'm here to voice opposition to the rezoning of this property. It kind of seems like two wrongs sure can't make a right. And, you know, we keep changing the look and the personality of the neighborhood and just where does it end? Where's the stopping point for the complete character change of what I'm used to seeing on Main Street for fifty-seven years now? So I certainly don't blame the property owner, but again, I can't say or thank or believe that one benefiting and hurting the other nineteen that signed the petition would help any of us at that point either. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook. Anybody else? Last call. Mr. Roundtree, you coming up?
Chairman Lamb, Commissioners, my name's Clyde Roundtree with Huddlestone Steel Engineering. First, I'd like to start off by thanking the neighbors for their active interest in this project. Obviously, it's kind of the classic situation we run into where, in a sense, Main Street hits, you know, progress. And so as a result, I think a lot of the concerns are not only about this project, but what's the next project? And so all we can do is address this project. And I know that it's really the Planning Commission and city team and staff to determine if it keeps on going down Main Street. So logically, I think the, as far as this brawl question, you know, Jupiter Road seems like it's the obvious location for something to stop. But right now, if it doesn't get zoned, RM16 is going to be this RS12 little portion of land that's going to potentially be a spot zoning issue, just something that's going to be kind of there. I think it's logical to allow the adjacent zoning to continue at least up to the future or at least up to the adjacent road. And as far as what we're running into in the city, which we're doing a lot of studies on as far as the need for apartments and where they end up, it just so happens that MTSU and Main Street have a relationship. I mean, they're in relationships. It's not always the case in a lot of cities. But along the perimeter of MTSU, there's going to be consistent need. Basically, some of that's due to the university's position on housing, but there will be a constant need for housing for the university. And we know that there's things changing possibly with the Tennessee Promise program and how that's going to affect the school. But right now, those apartments are seventy-five percent occupied. So people are seeing a need for them. And by no means are they dilapidated student housing. They're nice. I mean, it took a lot of time architecturally to make sure they had a character, whether it's liked or not, that's always a subjective thing, but it has more of a craftsman-style character that's consistent with some of the older homes. Granted, they're not the same scale, but there was a sensitivity to the fabric of the neighborhood and trying to make it architecturally sensitive. One of the questions came up, the impact on Hobgood School, and we don't think there'll be any impact on Hobgood necessarily. This is really student housing. As far as the density allowable, they're under their allowable density, so they've been respectful in that regards as well. And as far as meeting the city standards, as far as lighting control, buffers, those were all negotiated through the design process and site planning process. So we don't feel like there's any adverse or any kind of dereliction of requirements from the city's concern. And so with that, you know, they provide an onsite management team, which is something we're really looking at as a city for any kind of apartment complex, to make sure it's well-managed. They have full-time security on the facility. They have multiple cameras on the facility. That will allow for the facility to be well-run and well-maintained, which is usually typically a concern of a lot of neighbors, is what's going to happen with those apartments? Are they going to become, you know, substandard? And that's not the case in this situation. And as far as Jupiter Lane or Jupiter Street, that's been brought up, you know, is there going to be any kind of parking on that road? There's not any intended, any off-street parking that's going to be on that particular road. They will have an access point off the site that will utilize that road. However, no intention to have any kind of parking associated with that. So I just wanted to address some of the neighbors' concerns that were expressed.
Mr. Roundtree?
Yes, sir.
I didn't realize you were going to make your spiel for the applicant at this time.
Okay.
You should have waited to the conclusion of the public hearing and then we could have asked you to come up. I'm going to ask you to hold off, just stop where you are right there. I need to go ahead and let anybody that'd like to speak, that'd like to come up finally. And then I'll close the public hearing and then
Yes, sir.
Let you finish, okay? I apologize.
No problem.
You can stay up here. That being said, would anybody else like to speak?
I'll ask right, my name's Chad Gilbert. I'm the owner and developer. And is it, is this the right time or should we wait?
It's not.
Okay. I just wanted to-
That's right. I just want the public to have an opportunity to fully voice in before you guys can come up. Back to my question. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Mr. Roundtree, you're welcome to finish and then, sir, you can come up. Are you through?
Again, my name is Chad Gilbert. I've got my notes here on my phone. With respect to some of the things that have been mentioned here tonight, we wish to respectfully counter some of these things with some of the items from your 2035 plan. We've been, we've been through rezoning processes in other communities where they actually require you to do a report and footnote and refer back to the plan. I know it's not a requirement here, but it seemed appropriate to do that. And I'll keep it brief, just to bullet points. The items that we found in research within the plan that seem consistent with the development that we're offering are housing to support educational activity, housing communities with emphasis on safety, efficient use of land, efficient landy resident ratios, fiscally responsible development, environmentally responsible development, promote pedestrian activity and lifestyle, support of MTSU growth and enrollment, innovative and creative housing ideas, competitive cost of living rates, consistent with initiative to use infill and adaptive reuse of land inventory supported by existing infrastructure, improving average age of housing stock and inventory, and promoting consumer support within the local dollar shed area. You know, that's consumers to local retail concerns in the area. We wish to offer that, that in the spirit of, our development is considered. It's not just, hey, how many units can we get on here and how much rent can we generate? We tried to look at Murphysboro as a community. The comment was made that, you know, it is a bit of a flagship community. We, obviously, we gravitate to that for the obvious reasons, but we also tried to look at that and maintain the spirit of the planning you all have outlined in your 2035 plan. And we feel like our development checks most of those boxes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir.
Would you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I do. First, I'd like to talk about the property where the apartments, not actually this section asking for rezoning, but where the apartments are constructed currently. That was zoned some, I believe, twenty-plus years ago, rezoned for multifamily. There was a zoning entitlement to build on that property. When the developer came to talk to us about that, there was an entitlement. Staff wanted to see equality development, if there was going to be one, equality development. I do believe the developer has done a good job with the development he's done. I want to give credit where it's due. They have finished that development, pretty much. I think it is, if not completed, it's very close to. They did approach me some time ago to ask about this portion as far as rezoning to expand their project. I did share with them my concerns. Some of my concerns were some of the things you've heard tonight, the expansion of it, where do you stop? Multifamily, in my opinion, is not in harmony with the rest of that development. They're estate lots, they're large estate lots. I could not do anything about the existing zoning that was there, the entitlement. I did share those thoughts with them, my concerns, the neighborhood, being on Main Street, expanding this project. I told them that I had concerns and was not for it. They chose to make application and come before the Planning Commission, which is their right. I did receive a lot of calls from the neighborhood about expanding the zoning. The 2035 plan does talk about the things that Chad Gilbert has spoke about, but it also talks about being in harmony with the neighborhoods, blending with the neighborhoods. Infill should be, take on part of the neighborhood. I don't feel that that's what this does. I don't feel that it is in harmony with the neighborhood and advised against it.
I'd like to address Mr., I believe it was Mr. Cook that had questions about whether it was, or Mr. Hooper, I believe it's Mr. Cook, about is this the final vote and everything? The procedure is the hearing comes before the Planning Commission for recommendation. We either recommend it to the city council with approval or we turn it down. If we turn it down, the developer still has the right to go to the city council with their proposal. In either case, it could end up in the city council. But it's, you know, we will be making a vote now. There would have to be a site plan done. If it was approved and the zoning did go through, obviously, there'd have to be a site plan submitted with complete drainage and traffic and everything else on there that we require on our site plans. But it's a big process to the whole thing. But there will be a vote pertaining to-
a big process to the whole thing, but there will be a vote pertaining to our recommendation. Okay? I've got a lot of roots to go back in this area, and for those of you who know my family, you know what I'm talking about. For almost seventy years, I'm afraid to say. But I was shocked when I, first time I drove down Main Street when those apartments were constructed there. And I was shocked in a very negative way. It's not what I envisioned for this part of town. And I don't think it's consistent, good planning for us to keep going with this type of thing through those large estate lots on that side of East Main Street. I think it's, I know the university, and I'm a huge Middle Tennessee fan and alumnus, but the university needs housing for their students, but there's appropriate places and there's inappropriate places. And I think this is one of the most inappropriate places I could think of to continue it any further. So I cannot support this proposal myself. And I'd like to hear from other members of the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman, I spent about an hour this afternoon driving the Jupiter, Apollo, Main Street, just driving around, driving through the apartment complex. And it was my first time to see it since they'd been completed. You know, when you're just on the apartment property and looking at that development itself, it's a very nice-looking development. But I too was quite shocked at the, you know, the height. I think Mr. Vaught referred to that. But it's my understanding that is the height that was by right. That was not a variance. That was not anything we approved. I mean, that's just was part of that original zoning back from 1980-something, and that wasn't something we got to choose. As you drove around the Baird Lane, the picture Ms. Richards provided, looking there and just looking over the existing houses and seeing the apartments, I was extremely concerned about that. I actually lived on Baird Lane at one point in my lifetime here. And then to drive all the way back around the back, even back on, I guess that's Jupiter that's behind it, still seeing the apartments from the back, and then back down Minerva on the side, just all the way around. And I feel terribly for the parcel that we are discussing right now and how close their home sits to the property line next to the apartments. I was also, I know the buffer is probably what we approved or what is required between multifamily and single-family. It's kind of, I guess I was expecting more, but I was not pleased, I guess, with what I saw, and also do not believe that this would be something that we would want to extend to another, you know, one more section down. So I agree, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Smotherman.
Bob, Kathy, I agree with you a thousand percent. The, when I look at the neighborhood, I was over there Saturday, I guess it was, for the sixtieth anniversary for Hobgood School, and was fortunate enough to be out behind the school and look across the campus there. And, of course, there's the beautiful old houses across the street. But as you look across the skyline, you see the new development. It does not fit in with the character of the neighborhood. It just does not fit. I like the domino comparison of where do you stop it? And with this thing, you know, the horse may have gotten out of the barn, as Mr. Vaughn said, but there's a point that you say, just stop. And that's the way I feel about this development, is it's a nice facility, but it's in the wrong place. And to allow it to continue would only be making the problem worse. So, you know, the developer did a fine job of what he was building. The only problem is, is the location, it just does not work on Main Street. And so I'll be voting against it at this level, and if you decide to carry it to the city council level, I can assure you, it would probably receive the same vote.
Mr. Smotherman, would you like to make a motion?
I'm gonna make, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I didn't see you edging up there.
I know. I'm gonna be the, I guess, the minority here. I get the, is it, it's been approved. In my view, the natural border here would be Jupiter, and you've got a single lot that's sitting there that, I understand that we've got a lot more people here that it's impacting, but to me, the natural boundary for this development would be Jupiter. And I know I'm in the minority, but that's just the way I feel about the development in and of itself.
I understand. Anybody else? Now we're ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we decline the request for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. We have one, two, three, four, five ayes and one no, so the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, participating in this process. I hope you go away with a firm belief that our system works here in Murfreesboro. And remember that in the future, please, because we may vote on something sometime you may not like. So that concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Mr. Whitaker, do you have any staff reports?
I do not.
There's no staff reports, we stand adjourned.